I'll turn on the zoom and I'm gonna hang up. Thanks, Asher. Thanks, Mark.
Hi, Yancy. Thank you for sending me the invitation.
You're muted. You're still muted.
I was saying, good morning.
Hi, Merle.
Hi.
Hello? Hi, Catherine. I sent you a meeting invite back on Friday afternoon. It should be in there. You got it? Okay. You're welcome.
I was thinking maybe we should invest in some Inglewood songs while we're waiting on stuff like this. Everybody could sing along.
I'm not hearing anybody. Why is that? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I can't hear anybody.
I think that's why.
Oh, my volume's off. There you go.
It was intentional.
There we go. My volume was off.
Kevin, you look way too scruffy.
Hey, Jim. We're just waiting on one more council member.
Hello, Councilman Wayne.
Greetings.
Hamer.
Hi.
Okay, everybody's here. I see everybody now.
Yep. Mr. Cobb, you're muted. There you go. I unmuted you.
I see Greg's got his tie on, ready for business.
Yeah.
You're muted, Greg. You know that, right?
I think he likes it that way.
Talking to me and he's muted.
You don't want to know what he said.
I got that. So we're waiting for one more.
One more council member, yes.
Okay. And they think Cheryl, Cheryl's not coming tonight?
No, she's not able to attend tonight.
Hey, Jim. Fredorko. Remind me, I have to get in touch with you tomorrow, okay?
Okay.
I have a question for you. Huh?
I'll set a note for myself.
I'll set one for myself as well.
Okay.
To make sure that I call you tomorrow.
Very good.
I meant to do it today, but I just forgot. I'll put a note. Is this the mail?
Yeah, he just joined. I think now.
Let's get him to say, I just talked to him.
Evening, everybody.
Hi, Mayor.
There he is.
Hi. Mr. Peterowitz, how are you, sir?
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Great.
They all don't have our last council member.
Mr. Lake, how are you? Mr. Fredorko, sorry, couldn't take a call before. Wayne, Greg, Yancy.
Hi, Mayor.
Hi, Ken. Peter.
Hey, Mayor. How you doing?
Hey, how are you?
Good.
We're just waiting for one more council member to join. And then we'll get started right away.
Nice job today on the testing, Yancy.
That was not me. Thank you.
I know. Still took some organization and stuff.
I thank Jim Moore for that.
Hey, Jim, how many people today?
I don't know, Councilman Cobb. I'd have to find out.
It wasn't as handsomely attended as the last one. But I saw a lot of people from Inglewood Cliffs. They did a big advertising effort in getting it to everybody to come.
I think we have a third member. Councilman Cohen has, I believe, has joined us.
Yes. We have a.
We have Councilwoman Glenn as well on the, on the.
Yes, she's here.
She's here, so we could, we can get started. Anthony?
Yes.
Okay. I call this City Council Workshop Meeting of July 14, 2020, to order at 7:34. Will you all rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Will the city clerk please read the Open Public Meetings Act?
This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. Notice of this meeting was included in a notice sent to the record and the Star Ledger and advertised in said newspapers on July 17, 2020, posted on the bulletin board in a municipal building and has remained continuously posted as the required notices under the statute. Notice of amended meeting date was advertised in the record on July 10, 2020. A copy of this notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the municipal clerk. Please take notice that in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA, N. colon, four dash six, ed. C., and in consideration of Executive Order Number 103, issued by Governor Murphy on March 9, 2020, declaring a state of emergency and a public health emergency in the state of New Jersey, the City of Inglewood does hereby notify the public that to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens while ensuring the continued functioning of government. The City Council Workshop Meeting scheduled for July 14, 2020, at the Inglewood Municipal Court, 73 South Band, Brun Street, Inglewood, New Jersey, 07631, will be held telephonically via Zoom only. Members of the public who wish to participate in the meeting may do so by calling, by clicking on the link that's on our website, or by dialing 929-205-6099 and followed by the passcode 86974010868 at 7:30 PM. Individuals calling into this number will be able to fully participate in the meeting, including providing public comment. A non-public dial-in number will be used for close session. We'll actually go into a breakout room. Proper notice hasn't been given. The municipal clerk is directed to include the statement in the minutes of this.
Just so you could, please do the roll call.
Councilman Cohen.
Here.
Councilwoman Glenn.
Here.
Councilman Hamer.
Present.
Council President Cobb.
Here.
Also present is Mayor Michael Wilds and City Attorney Levi Cool or Bill Bailey. Absent with prior notice is Councilwoman Rosenberg.
Okay, first up on tonight's agenda, we have a presentation from Mike Peterowitz of Inglewood Hospital, Inglewood Health, excuse me, and request for banners and signage along Dean Street. Did I get that right, Mike?
You got that pretty good, Mr. Cobb. Thank you.
Maybe Mr. Hamer could give us a little background, then we'll let you give us what you got, okay?
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Good evening, everyone. This is the next step in a years-long conversation that started with the Inglewood Economic Development Corporation. And Mike and I were members and he had conversations about, you know, some banners and signage along. And I'll let him explain to you, but, you know, the start of what's in formalization of what's been our medical mile. And Mike, if you don't mind, would you take it away?
Sure.
I'm sorry, before you begin, I know you had sent over a PowerPoint presentation. Do you want us to put that up on the screen?
Yeah, that would be great. Yeah, I'd appreciate that.
Asher, are you here? Can you do that, please? Asher is here.
He's not here?
Not I can try and figure it out.
Or we can post it to our website so folks can get it that attended the meeting tonight and any other folks that are interested. If you can't get it up there right now.
I got it.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead. Oh, Asher's, okay, Asher took over.
Oh, that's, Yancy, thank you so much for that. Mr. Hamer, thank you for teeing this up. So my name is Mike Peterowitz. I'm a Senior Vice President at Inglewood Health. I've had the pleasure of working at Inglewood Hospital, now Inglewood Health, since 1992. And I've also had the pleasure of working with many people on the City Council, both past and present, and several of the people I see on this Zoom call as residents of the town. So thank you for giving me a couple of minutes to maybe refresh some of the discussions, as Mr. Hamer said, that we had at the former EEDC, the Inglewood Economic Development Committee. We at Inglewood Health, and I think some other members on this call, saw a really good opportunity for the city and for the hospital to help with some branding efforts and branding opportunity. What we have done and put together for you is something, hopefully, that you'll imagine and you'll see, and hopefully can come to fruition. It's an opportunity, again, for both of us to talk about the great services, the great city, and the great hospital that we all have in Inglewood. So we want to promote. We want to talk about Inglewood Hospital. Now, Inglewood Health's 130-year history. We see a great opportunity for the city to use this as a way, in any way you would like, to brand services, to brand the history, to brand past and present leaders within the city, however you see fit. We do want to talk about and recognize, we have many assets, many physician offices and other offices located throughout the city, and we want to let the community know about it. And what we've called this affectionately is the Medical Mile. Yancy, if you could advance to the next slide, please? I think you may have seen these telephone pole banner signs in other towns and cities throughout northern New Jersey and beyond. What this is, these are samples. Some pictures of some real-life banners that are located in the immediate area. You may recognize them or the town. And in the center of it is a mock-up that we've designed, which would show a banner to the right under Inglewood Health with some, you know, very simple narrative about, that will be put on the banner. And then on the left-hand side, another banner. And we just put on the city's tagline, "A Place For Everyone," but it would be a place where, again, the city could look for many different ways and options to promote the history, the vibrancy of the town. If you could take me to the next slide, Yancy, please? There, there are many different options available in both size and in the way that these banner signs can be affixed to telephone poles or or light poles. What we're suggesting together is we look at the telephone poles located in the rectangle that is made up of Dean Street, Palisade Avenue, Angle Street, and East Hudson Avenue as that rectangle to create what we're calling the Medical Mile, or maybe we call the Magical Mile of Inglewood, whatever together we want to call it. Yancy, if you can advance to the next slide, please? This is just a very quick pictorial. We actually did an inventory of all the light poles that exist in this rectangle, this mile. We're not, of course, talking about saturating every single light pole with these banner signs. We just wanted to get an idea about how many exist within that mile, and I believe it's over 100. So what, what we're proposing at Inglewood Health's full cost, we would provide the full investment for this. We would work with the appropriate city official to identify the right locations. We would together look to secure whatever permission or permits are required within the city. We may and most likely would need to go to the county since some of these roads are county roads. And together with some of our creative people, we come up with the type of messaging to best position the city and to best position Inglewood Health using these banner signs as branding, as education, as ways to drive people to learn about the services that are available, both for health services as well as any other services within the city of Inglewood. Again, this is concept. It's been in discussion, oh, probably, Wayne, for at least a year or two. I apologize for bringing it to this group so late, but I still think it has a tremendous benefit and opportunity. And that's what I wanted to share with you tonight. Wanted to let you know how we view it, or we look to invest in it, how we would look to partner with the city on it. And I'm here to answer any questions to the best of my ability or come back with those answers if I, if I can't answer.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mike?
Just a comment before the questions begin. Council President?
Excuse me?
Just a comment before the questions begin.
Yes, go ahead.
And, and as Mike said, this is conceptual. If the council members would think it through and, you know, our city professionals think, think it through, we can come up with a plan for, if it is to move forward, just so that we can discuss, you know, the possibilities and the preferences. And, and then we could formalize and invite Mike back for a more formal presentation and, and really dig, dig into it a little bit more.
Right. Agreed. Does anybody have any questions, though? Anthony, we got any questions from the public either?
I have a question.
Catherine?
Yeah. So just wanted to ask kind of person-on-the-street question. So I'm a resident in Inglewood, a taxpayer. And what is the benefit to me of having this branding, this partnership with Inglewood Health?
If you're, if you're asking me for what I believe the benefit is?
Yeah, sure. Love to hear from you, Mike.
I'd be more than happy to answer that, Councilwoman Glenn. You know, I think, I think Inglewood Health has a tremendous benefit being in such a vibrant town. And I think conversely, the city of Inglewood is very fortunate to have such a significant academic teaching hospital in, in its midst as well. I think, as you know, we're the largest employer in the city of Inglewood. We value our partnership with the town. Working together, we do great things. I think as evidenced as most recently with the whole COVID pandemic, working really well. And thank you, Jim, I can see you. Haven't talked to you in a while, but thank you for everything that you did during, during this crisis. And we're going to need to continue to work together, unfortunately, on this issue. I think what it does, it elevates the status of the city that we love. It says to people, it brands for people that we are a town of significance. And, and the partnership, to me, does one plus one equals three. It, it really just elevates for everybody, and hopefully it's a pride piece for everybody to feel great, to, to be part of this community and to have such a great partnership between the hospital and the city. And I'd be more than, I'd love to hear some of the other comments if I'm off base.
Charles?
Yes.
So, Michael, first of all, thank you for your own personal partnership with the city of Inglewood and the hospital. It's been stellar, extraordinary. Honestly, I don't think the hospital would be as successful had they not had you at the helm. And frankly speaking, you saved many lives in our city. So thank you for the good work that you did. I think this is a wonderful branding opportunity. There are a lot of moving parts that we have with the hospital that need to be resolved. And we're hoping to get to a good station in, in a normal sphere, if we can. Some of the things to contemplate with this kind of branding would be a sharing, if you would, or sponsorship. It could be that somebody of private practice could sponsor one of the marquees or the, the flag. Or it could be in honor of a past resident or somebody who was a civic leader, and it could be promoted by people, and the revenue can be earned or shared with the city. One of the things that we're going to have to do, Michael, in the next generation of this city is to come up with more creative ways of gaining revenue. And, and I don't want to monetize the relationship between Inglewood Health and the city of Inglewood because there's no money you can place on, on the stellar work and the leadership that both the city and your good hospital have shown. But one of the things I would suggest, and humbly, is that we come up with a way to monetize this, where it's not just the Inglewood itself heralding itself, but other medical partners within the city that don't compete with our or your initiatives, that could actually supplant funds to the city for the privilege of this mini billboard, if you would. And, and the final message that I would suggest is that this somehow also go to the Sign and Facade Committee of the Planning Board as it matures. And I appreciate the history that you and Wayne have at the. And I appreciate the history that you and Wayne have at the EDC, the EEDC, and now the Special Improvement District. And you are the biggest employer that we have. But we want to also make sure with all the concerns that we have, that they're aesthetic, that they match, not just the community, the colors, and that there is some kind of guiding comment from the Sign and Facade Committee at the Planning Board. So, again, you know, I would urge this very important project to go forward. I would endorse it. I would like to see if there's a way to monetize it appropriately and for that to not compete with your branding at all, Michael, because we want the hospital to profit from it. And the last thing I have to say to everybody here is that the hospital embarked in a very robust campaign after the immediate curve was flattened. And that is to remind people that they exist, heart attacks, strokes, they're not going away. And this is yet another way to telegraph to pedestrians, to people that are going through, that this is such an important station in life. And I can't think of a better time for the city to endorse a project like this for that very reason also. Thank you, Mr. Kaufman.
Anyone else?
I have another question, if I may.
Yes, Catherine.
And thank you, Michael, for your answer to my question. I appreciate it. And I agree with all the statements that you made. Just like aspirational, I guess, type question. If this goes forward, if there was a way to somehow have a channel over to Dwight Morrow, I think that would be really compelling. And Dwight Englewood not, you know, to all our schools, I guess I should say, in terms of opportunities that exist for students who live here and who go to school here in terms of the hospital. I know you do internships and you have a lot of efforts that you already have in place in that direction. But it just strikes me as it, there may be an opportunity to include something about our schools and a way of channeling possible careers for our children.
I think it's a great idea. You're right, Councilwoman Glenn. We've been long providing apprenticeships, internships. We've partnered with many of the local agencies to do that. We can't do enough of that. It's important for us. It could develop our future healthcare providers, our future healthcare leaders. And I think it's, I think it provided great avenue, even maybe for students to get involved in the creation of this. I mean, there's opportunities in marketing and advertising where we can get some of the good ideas from some of the students as we put this together. I love the idea.
Great.
I did want to mention, and I should have before, so I'm sorry. And I don't want to take too long on this. But I do want to say to you, in my travels, and I'm sure in your travels, you've seen this type of opportunity, whether it be at colleges or universities or other health systems. I mean, even just in the city of Teaneck, on Teaneck Road, there is a banner sign program. In one of the towns where I live or near where I live, it's called Sterling, New Jersey, they've taken the opportunity to honor all the lost veterans of conflicts since the beginning of the country. And just, it just makes you sit and pause. And it's something I remember, even though I haven't been back to the town of Sterling for about two years. Town of Red Bank, town of Westfield, they've all taken this opportunity as a way to celebrate the history, to talk about the current opportunity and to talk about the future. You know, and if there's a way to do it in a simple way, in a consistent way, I think we're all better off for it. And I'll leave it at that.
Any other questions?
Sir Kauf, did you open this up to the public or was the question just for the?
Opening it up to the public.
There's, Ms. Jansen has her hand up. And just a reminder to the public, if you'd like to speak, bottom of the screen, under reactions icon, just click on the raised hand.
Hi, Diane Jansen, 589 Richland Terrace, Englewood. Michael, I don't know if I'm saying your last name right, Pietrowicz. But thank you very much. Something that says, yes, Englewood, a place for everyone. And I've arrived here. I can't underscore enough what you've said and all the opportunity that it presents. I'm a former hospital administrator. And whenever I go to a town and I see that partnership between a town and a healthcare facility, the hospital, I know that I'm in a safe place. Thanks.
Thank you for those kind words, Diane. And I look forward to meeting you and learning a little bit more about you and your hospital experiences as well.
Yancy, we have anyone else?
No, I don't see anyone else with their hand raised. And sometimes people just raise their hand on the screen. Oh, Reverend Harper.
Reverend Harper? Is she on mute?
Yes.
Greetings, everyone. I too appreciate the idea, Michael, because I'm not sure about how to pronounce your last name. But my question is, are we going to meet? I guess this is for the council. Are we going to meet again to discuss the particulars? Namely, the color, the design? Can we get the kids from Dwight Morrow High School involved in the design of the banners themselves? And will the banners also go beyond the mile, as you say? Will they go beyond the mile? And can we get the kids involved in the design?
This is, my last name is Peterwitz. It's correctly pronounced Pietrowicz, but I Americanized it to Peterwitz.
Pietrowicz.
Thank you for trying. I will say to you, we absolutely commit to engaging students in the program and the design, maybe the ongoing operations of it. I think it can only do good for all of us and for the kids. And regarding the extent, the miles, the streets, we absolutely would want to work with the city and whomever else to identify appropriate places for these pole banners. And again, we agree to fully fund it, Englewood Health. So if there's opportunities to monetize it for the benefit of the city, no problem whatsoever with that. But we stand, I stand here today representing that we will fund 100% of the installation and the ongoing maintenance, the ongoing program of it.
I just encourage you to involve the children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yancy, anybody else?
No, I don't see anyone else with their hand raised.
Okay. We're going to close that part of the public session. And we're going to, thank you, Mike, appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
That's Councilman Hamer's assignment. I'm sure he'll be in touch with you so we can get to the next steps on this.
Gladly.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
The next thing is we have Resolution 15207-14-20, Approval of Bills and Claims in the amount of $2,126,968.29. I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any questions?
What is this about, please? What's the summary?
Excuse me?
What is this about? What is the motion, the $2 million for?
Bills list.
Pardon me?
Yancy?
This is for the Bills List Resolution.
Bills and Claims List. This is with council members, Bills and Claims List. Any questions? Councilman Hamer?
No, no. I have some lesser questions, but I'll direct those to the department heads.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. Is Mr. Kaufman on?
Yes, he's here.
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Kauf.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. I think we've had this conversation a couple of times about the covert services, you know, stuff that we file specialized services. And what I noticed was that instead of them being lumped together, most of them are, but there are a few on page three of five. And then there's some on four or five. And then we have some on page one of one. Can we get all those together?
Well, three of five and four of five is just because it didn't fit on, I mean, it didn't fit on one page.
What I mean?
And one of them is pre-pays. So pre-pays on the top.
Right. Can we get them all together in one place? And then can we get, can we have a total for that? So we know what the total is? Because I think it would be easier for you as you submit those things to FEMA. You have it all locked in together? So you don't have to go?
The way we're submitting it to FEMA is a whole different.
Okay, well.
Volume anyway. But yeah.
On this Bills and Claims report, what is the total amount? Do you know?
I could tell you in two minutes.
All right. Well, that's what I'm saying. Going forward, if we could get that number kind of broken out somewhere, it just makes it easier. How about that?
Okay.
So I also have a couple of questions around.
Well, sorry. What I could probably do is I'll do the bills the regular way because the resolution has to be attached. I'll attach another page with.
Yeah, that would be helpful. You know, number of items and total, whatever it is, that would be helpful. Yeah, okay. Thank you with that. I have some questions around the quality cooling. And one of the, one of the bills for 2,003,2750. What are we doing at Garrity Field? Maybe Mr. Volsey will have to help you with this. But what are we doing there? We got an air conditioning field house?
I'm not aware of the air conditioning unit at Garrity Field, what's being worked on there. I don't know if it's something that Ed Roy is working on, but I'm not aware of any of the work taking place on the actual AC at the field.
Yeah. And so I guess somebody has to help me out here. We put DPW, then we put Buildings and Grounds. Buildings and Grounds is under DPW, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So why don't we, why isn't it all DPW? Mr. Kaufman?
They're all DPW.
But that's not the way it is in the report. That's what I'm saying to you. It's all DPW. So why don't we just put it all there? It just makes our life, I think, easier. Makes your life easier as well.
It's all in, it's all in Buildings and, it's all in Buildings and Grounds and there's one in DPW Administration. So it's all DPW.
No, no, no. So I'm saying if it's all pertaining to DPW, why don't we put it all to DPW? Because ultimately, that's the department you're charging with all these activities, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Subdivision.
Right. But I'm saying, for accounting purposes, it should just be DPW. You're going to drill down, but it's the same budget. So I mean.
Right.
For us publicly, for us publicly, it just should say DPW. On the general ledger, if you want to go down to the ground and deal with it, that's okay. But I think it's still DPW. So let's move on from that. So the, and I have a question. I don't know between you, Yancy, Franz, everyone's not here. But we got to, we got to, I guess it says sanitation equipment. We got parts for like $4,252.09. We got repairs for $4,196.80. Is this a, what kind of vehicle? Is it one of those dump trucks, garbage trucks or whatever?
Which one? What's the PO number? Just so I know what you're trying to talk about.
It's on page three of five.
Three of five?
Yes. And they're right next to each other. Sanitation equipment. Is this one of these, one of the trucks you're going to take out of service when we get the new trucks?
Question. We'll find out.
Okay. I just, I don't want us to keep spending all this money trying to repair something that just is going to cost us a lot of money. But you got, Yancy, y'all don't have to find this now. You can always send them.
I'm not looking for it now. I'm just marking it for later.
Okay. All right. So my last question is, we have, it says fire pre-employment physicals.
Sorry, you broke up a little bit there, Mr. Kauf.
Okay, sorry. On page four of five, we have two entries. And one says fire, fire pre-employment physicals for $6,000. And then.
That should be police.
Wait a minute. So those two entries should be, well, then the whole thing is wrong.
The first one, just a description. The first description should be police preempted, pre-employment physicals for $6,000. Second one's fire pre-employment physicals for $14,000.
Yeah, so then, but the first one that says, the one you said for $6,000 should be police?
Yes, it's charged to police also.
But it says, the description says fire.
I know, but look at the left of the page under the account description. That's the one that's more important than the item description. That's just, no. That's more.
How do we get the description wrong?
Whoever typed it in. It's just a typo, obviously. Look at the very far left one.
I get, I get it. But I'm saying if somebody's reading that.
Just a side note. Look at the more important one. That's a side note. Look at the more important one. It's far left, one says police.
Well, you know what? Here's what I would say to you. Here's what I would say to you. That there, as a certified auditor, they raise the flag and we get in trouble for that.
It's a side note. It's an internal note. The more important one is where it was charged to.
Well, it's not, I hear what you're saying, but I'm not, that's not for discussion here. But they got to get that right.
Well, you brought it up. So I'm letting you know, it's just an internal note.
But well, it's wrong.
It's not an audit comment. It wouldn't be an audit comment. It would not be an audit comment.
Not be an audit comment. Because it's an internal.
You certified auditor?
I was.
Me too. I am. I am. So what I'm saying to you is, is it wrong or right? That's, let's answer that question.
If the backup proves that it should be charged to the correct account, then it's right and it's fine.
That's what I want to know.
Description was supposed to be police, but it's not a audit problem.
Okay. So end of story. We don't have to discuss it or belabor it.
Start it up.
Roll call.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Glenn.
Yes.
Councilman Hamer.
I vote yes. That's not my music.
Sorry. And not mine either. Council President Kauf.
Yes. Next resolutions for vote.
Has music on? Merle, I think I'm going to have to meet you. Sorry.
Who's that?
Sorry. Merle's box was lighting up. Sorry, Merle.
Resolutions 153, 154, 155, 156, 157, 158, for unanimous consent. Prior to that, we open this up to the public, Yancy?
Yes, we always do. Two minutes for everyone, I believe.
Two minutes for everybody. Anybody have any questions on any of these resolutions?
Just a reminder again for everyone in the public. At the bottom of your screen, there's a reactions button. Just click on it and insiders raise hand. Anyone raising their?
Nobody. You don't see any hands answering, is that?
No, no hands raised.
Anybody on the council have any questions? Councilman Hamer, Glenn, Cohen?
I have a question. Resolution 153.
Yep.
Regarding the rear loading sanitation trucks.
Yes.
I didn't get a track, but we did budget for this, correct?
Correct, yes. It was also in the capital order. And it was included in this year's.
Yep.
Sorry.
Right, just wanted verification, thank you.
Yep. Anybody else, anyone else? Hamer, Cohen, you guys, no? Anyone from the public, Nancy, can we open up to the public?
We already did.
Which we did.
Yeah, there's no.
No, no takers, okay. Let's have a roll call.
I need a motion and second.
Need a motion?
We adopt by unanimous consent.
By unanimous consent, yep, so move.
Is there a second?
You can second it if you.
I, I made the motion.
Second.
I'll second it.
All right.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Glenn.
Yes.
Yes.
Council Pres, uh, Council President Cobb.
Yes. Next, we have Burton County Historical Preservation Trust Fund application for the Women's Club PF Englewood.
Oh, it's, uh, sorry, that was a typo.
Strike, strike the PF Englewood. Uh, so we have the public hearing, um, Mr. Cool. Are you on?
Um, I'm, I'm, uh, was planning to.
Not you, not you, well, yeah, Mr. Cool.
Levi, are you here?
I'm here, Council President.
We have a bad connection.
Levi, we got a bad connection. But I want to make sure that the public hearing and we're walking.
Okay.
Levi, that's real bad.
I will, uh, call on to another, another number, sorry about that.
Gotta repeat that, please, it didn't come out.
Are you back? Levi?
I don't hear him.
Sorry, I'm gonna call in from a number.
Still sounds bad.
You may have to hang up and.
You might have to just hang up.
I am going to call on from another number, sorry about the bad connection.
So this is, you know, I guess, Nancy, I'll just go through it real quick until Levi gets back.
If you'd like, yeah, and I believe Mr. Lee's, Dr. Lee's on.
Yeah, I'm gonna let him, give him a, 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 a few minutes on this. So, uh, resolution fifty nine oh seven one, I mean, one four twenty, resolution acknowledging the submission of a Burton County Historical Preservation Trust Fund application. So, Mr. Lee, I'm gonna give you two minutes, you can do your thing, and then when Mr. Cool gets back on, I think he wants to provide some guidance in, in, in terms of, uh, how we have to advertise this.
Okay, so, uh, as most of you know, this year is the hundredth anniversary of, uh, women's suffrage. And so there are going to be some events later in the year on that. It's the hundred twenty-fifth anniversary of the Women's Club of Englewood. Uh, there was early involvement in the saving of the Palisades, which involved both New Jersey and New York. Uh, so it's an historically important group. And it has, uh, applied for two grants, one from the state and one from the county for historic preservation to lay the groundwork. The, these are planning documents, uh, a preservation plan, and an application to the national and state registers for historic places. We have received from the State Preservation Office.
Somebody's got their phone on, could they put it on mute, because we getting the feedback, please?
We have received already from the.
Somebody, please mute your phone, because we're getting feedback.
Uh, we have received, we have received already from the State Historic Preservation Office a certificate of eligibility for the national and state registers, which is really great news. And we need that in order to proceed with both the county and the state grants. So what this resolution is about, it's required by the county, and so is a public hearing. Uh, it, the enabling legislation requires us to ask the council to pass a resolution like this, and in fact, the wording, uh, for the most part, came straight from the county. And so, uh, we really appreciate, uh, the council's cooperation in this, and Charles Cobb in particular was extremely helpful in getting this on it, on the agenda, and turning it around in about a week. Uh, so we're very appreciative of that. Uh, we sent out notices to the members of the Women's Club of Englewood, and I see two people, Susan Eastman, uh, Eastham is the president of the Women's Club, Susan Eastham, and Alita Frizzell, I believe is on the board, I see, and there are a couple of us here from the Historical Society, Charlotte, Sean, and Natalie Beaumont, and myself. Uh, and there may be others as well, I'm not sure how this Zoom, uh, thing works. But, uh, so it is, it is a true public hearing. So, uh, we, we really would just appreciate a positive vote from the council on this resol, resolution. Uh, the point seems to be, from the county's point of view, that there's no financial support coming from the city, so this is a little unusual. And that the council is passing a resolution saying, we are giving no money to this whatsoever. Um, and the public hearing speaks for itself, it's just to really get knowledge, uh, out there to the public that there are these activities that have to do with historic preservation. If we get these grants and the planning documents are done, it will give us a blueprint for work in the future, including, for instance, uh, handicap half bathroom, which is really needed, and other things that will help the, uh, club serve the public, uh, through concerts, through public events, and so on. So, once again, uh, we're appreciative of the council's cooperation on this, uh, and Charles Cobb's in particular. And we ask for the, uh, the council's positive vote on the resolution, and appreciate the establishment of a public hearing within this section of the meeting.
Okay. Um, thanks, Mr. Lee, um, Levi?
I don't see him back on.
He just, he texted me, he said he was, he was on. Levi, did you, are you back?
I see.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you, so.
All right.
Levi, two things, I, I, I have a question. Will this serve as the public hearing, this meeting?
There's a, there's a question about notice, um, whether or not it is supposed to be publicized. Um, I defer to Mr. Lee on that, as to, I didn't have an actual copy of the grant application. Um, I just reviewed the resolution, what was submitted to, uh, was provided to me, so I, um, I defer to Mr. Lee and, uh, you know, what they have submitted and asked for, or been asked for by Burton County.
To my knowledge, there's no requirement for a prior advertisement through newspapers and so forth for, uh, public hearing to take place. I'll, I'll double check that with the county. Uh, the relevant meeting is gonna be two weeks from today, uh, by the county. Uh, if we need that, I guess we would have to come back to you.
Levi, on, on guidance, because he needs this voted on or us to act on it tonight, can we act on this? And that, you know, with our vote and, and move it and see what happens from there?
Yeah, the resolution from the municipality is, um, separate and apart from the public hearing. Um, the public hearing has to be conducted, uh, whether it's conducted before the council or in a private, or sorry, not private, but in another setting, you know, at another venue, um, it doesn't require the council to be present for that public hearing.
Okay. So, so, okay, so fine, so what I could do is I guess I could open this up to the public, if they have any questions, and then close it, and then we can vote on it? Could it, you saying it that way?
Absolutely.
Okay, fair enough. So, Nancy, why don't we just open this up to the public?
Did you want to give everyone a time limit, or?
Two minutes, two minutes is the time.
Um, so same as for everybody else, bottom of the screen, oh, someone is just actually raising their hands, uh, Ms. Charlotte Bennett, Sean? There you go. Wait, I think you're muted.
No, I'm done, I'm good. Uh, I want to add my thanks to Charles because this is a really wonderful thing for Englewood. Um, many of you know that you can rent the Women's Club for life cycle events, and as we've been working on this, you hear from many people from all over Englewood who have had graduation parties there, baby events there, weddings there, uh, and the building is one of the treasures of Englewood. In terms of the Women's Club, because it's Englewood and it's a hundred and twenty-five years old, it's one of the Women's Club that reflects what Englewood looks like, the diversity, the energy, the interesting history of women and the smart women that are involved, and this year we have a few men that are part of it as well. Uh, I appreciate that this is in front of the council, that county has been very responsive to us, and to have the city just facilitate it as well, it's a win, so I thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Uh, Ms. Jansen.
Hi, Diane Jansen, five eighty-nine Richland Terrace. I just wanted to comment that growing up in the town next door, always passing the Women's Club of Englewood, the Carriage House, um, and the beautiful site that it is, is something that is treasured by so many people. Um, I did not know for many years that that was the Women's Club, and when I found out and finally was able to attend an event there, I was amazed at the cross-section of women from the city that belong. And these are ma, mainly professional women who are carrying on in the same vein as those women who helped preserve the Palisades. And wouldn't it be great, uh, for this site to get those grants? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Um, um, this.
Somebody's raising their hand, Susan Eastham?
Oh, you just have to unmute yourself, you're on mute.
Susan, you need to unmute the.
I think, I think I'm unmuted now. I too want to add my thank you to the council meeting, and in particular to Charles Cobb. This is a really important step for the Women's Club of Englewood and our carriage house that we have owned for many, many years, but we are in need of some substantial upgrades, as Will pointed out, we need a handicap bathroom as one of the major ones. And so I really want to thank you for considering our resolution, and I hope you pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak?
Anyone else, uh, again, bottom of the screen, reactions button.
Yeah, Charles, if I can, just briefly.
Ma'am, let, let the public, and then we'll come back to us and we'll.
No problem.
We gotta do, hold on one second, just want to make sure the public has had an opportunity to speak.
I, I don't see anyone else from the public raising their hand.
Okay, then, then you go ahead, ma'am, go ahead.
Thank you, Susan, thank you for, uh, joining us, uh, this evening. Um, I know that you suffered some very significant losses, uh, in recent months.
Yes, we have.
And with the ability, the inability to rent out the space, your revenue is impacted as well, so the human loss and the financial loss, these are, uh, easy asks of city government. Ask us to do something harder, this is the first mayor's, uh, private residence and carriage house, and good citizens like Charlotte who give from their personal dollars for scholarships for young ladies ought to be lauded, and there are other ways, I'm sure that we can be of help. Please let us know what we can do, this is such a worthy cause, thank you, Mr. Cobb, for getting it on the agenda, and.
Anyone else in the governing body would like to speak to this?
Council President?
Yes.
Just, uh, want to make sure, because it sounds like this is a lot like the Community Development Block Grant, uh, we would just approve the, the documentation, and it's going before the County Historic Preservation Trust Fund, and, uh, and those dollars would be allocated from there. And there would, there is no expense to the city, and that's what it sounded like was being said.
Yes, that's correct, and, um, Mr. Cool verified that for us as he read the documents when I sent them over to him.
Okay, uh, no, it's a fantastic idea, uh, Will, thank you for the presentation, and apart from the, the handicap bathroom and, uh, you know, what, what other improvements are, are being sought?
Um, well, without going into too much gory detail, um.
I love.
One of the wall, one of the walls of the building, uh, needs some repointing, there's no danger of, you know, it's collapsing or anything like that, but that's something where the envelope of the building really needs to remain sound. Uh, the central room, the main room there is kind of a ballroom, uh, space with a small stage, so it's used for concerts. It's used for the various events and so forth, and the floor is pretty much had it. Uh, there are cracks in it and so forth, and so, uh, if it can be repaired, probably it's a waste of money, it probably needs to be redone, and that's a, a very substantial cost. Uh, just one more example, which I find rather funny. Someone who worked on the heating system actually disconnected the heat to the kitchen and the front hall. And so there is no heat in the kitchen and the front hall, and that needs to be addressed, uh, obviously, in order for the building to be fully functional. There are some aesthetic things as well. Basically, though, the, the Women's Club itself was able to raise funds, the roof is brand new, and apart from the repointing of one of the walls, the envelope is sound, and so we're, we're in good shape going forward, and we can afford this year for the planning documents, and then we'll get around to applying for grants for the actual work the following year.
Great, thank you, uh, happy one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary and, uh, the hundredth anniversary of suff, suffrage. Thank you.
Anyone else got, um, Councilwoman Glenn, you have anything, or Councilman Cohen?
Uh, I just want to say it's, uh, you know, a gem for the city, and I'm sure all of us are really happy to be able to support you in this way.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen, you have anything? No, I, yeah, I just want to say, you know, it's a pleasure for me to put this on here, and I think that all of us, um, support this effort and keep up the good work. Um, and, you know, when you bring things in front of us like that, you know, it makes our lives a little bit easier, so, and, and these things are, are, are beacons in our community, so, thank you. And so now with that, we will, Mr. Cool, I can go to the vote, excuse me? Mr. Cool, now I can hold a vote?
That's correct.
Okay.
A motion and second.
So move. We, can I second it? Roll call, Nancy, please.
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Glenn?
Yes.
Man Hamer?
Yes.
Council President Cobb?
I vote yes as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So as we move on, and we move on to the workshop, agenda items, resolutions for discussion. The first one is resolution honoring Lieutenant General William Earl Brown Jr. Um, for those who don't know him, he grew up on Army Street, and he recently.
Point of order, point of order, uh, the ordinance for discussion.
That's next.
That's next. That's next.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta take care of those resolutions first, don't, don't, don't you want me to do that for you? Okay, so as I was saying, um, we, um, the first resolution honoring Lieutenant General William Earl Brown Jr. He recently passed away, uh, grew up on Army Street, and I, I know a number of people have sent me information regarding him, and it's, it's. And it's, it's, it's somebody who's a part of the fabric of this town who's gone to the, you know, when you think about Lieutenant General, that's, he's climbed the military ladder pretty high there. And, and we need to recognize him. He, he's, he's quite accomplished in terms of what he's done. So for those who, you to have that information, please read it. Anybody have any questions regarding that resolution?
Can I just say, uh, he was honored and included in an exhibit the Historic Society had when we did the follow-up on World War I, the exhibits at the Gate House. And so many people knew about him. His, he flew fighter jets, 100 missions, two different wars. It's an extraordinary Inglewood story.
He is. And he also toured at Harvard and some other institutions, uh, when he retired. So, I mean, he's, he's got, he's quite accomplished. Um, the next resolution is supporting the legislation to declare Juneteenth a state holiday. Um, is, uh, um, as you know, that, uh, Lieutenant Joel Hoyle has been, he started about 10 years ago, 11 years ago, uh, bringing Juneteenth to the city of Inglewood. And now, um, I believe, uh, Steve Sweeney, who's the head of the Senate, is also putting, pushing legislation through regarding to recognizing, uh, that, uh, June 19th of every year is, uh, June, is, is recognized in honor of Juneteenth. So we just want to show our support from the city of Inglewood. Anyone have any questions regarding that? Um, move on to the next resolution, resolution supporting the legislation to designate June 13th as Black Lives Matters Day. And that was actually yesterday. Um, so our own Gordon Johnson, along with, uh, I, I think it's about 14 other members, but all the, the governing body at the Assembly, 58 to zero, and obviously 18 Republicans voted against it. Um, but all the Democrats, uh, supported this to make this day, June 13th, Black Lives Matter Day in the state of New Jersey. I know that we took a straw poll last Monday, um, and Councilman Cohen had a question regarding the language, uh, uh, in this, uh, measure. Uh, I want to ask him because I know he said something regarding, he was concerned about anti-Semitic language in there. And I wanted him to, wanted to know from him, did he have an opportunity to read the measure that we had sent over to him? So he would be comfortable with the language that is in there.
Yeah, I, I, I spoke to some, I spoke to some members of the Assembly. Um, and at, at that point, when I said that last week, I had not had a chance to review any, any piece of it. It was just, it was the first time we were told about it. So I just wanted to do my homework and found out the things that I was concerned about. Um, you know, we're not, uh, we're not there. It was done, it was done in appropr, it was done in, in appropriate and inclusive way. So, uh, it's something I'll be happy to support. Um, ju- ju- just by, I, I just wanted to just correct something you said on the record though. Um, even though I, I think it's, you know, I, I, I can't believe that, you know, we did not get, you know, unanimous support in the Assembly. I think it should have gotten unanimous support. Um, the, 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 those who didn't vote for it abstained. Um, there weren't any no votes. There are, there were abstentions, not that I think that that's any better in this regard. But, uh, you know, I think it's still, you know, unbelievable that people would abstain. But, uh, um, but there were, there were abstentions, abstentions. There weren't no votes, just, uh...
I don't know. I, I, I checked that because it was 58, 018 from Gordon Johnson's office sent that to me. So check that. But regardless of whatever it is, whatever it is, we, we're going to support it, right? From what I hear, we're going to support it. We're going to move it on. And we're going to be, um, you know, progressive as we always are here in Inglewood, supporting the right things that go on here. All right. Thank you with, thank you with that one. Um, shared service agreement with the County of Bergen for snow plowing and salting. Uh, Nancy, who's going to speak to that? Or Michael or you? You going to speak to that, Nancy or?
I can speak to it. So this is the same as the same, uh, this is the same as the shared services agreement that was passed by the council two years ago.
Okay.
Um, so as you're all aware, during snowstorms, um, we have an agreement with the county that we plow county roads and they reimburse us for the cost of the salt. Um, this is just a continuation of that agreement.
All right.
The two-year agreement. So with every two years it needs...
Every two years? Okay. All right. But we know how much salt they actually gave us in the last two years?
I don't think much this past...
Not much, right?
Yeah, it did not snow this last year.
Right. Okay. Res- resolution authorizing the submission of a Bergen County Open Space Grant Proposal for Flat Rock Brook Nature Association. Who can speak to that? Do we have somebody here?
I don't know if there's anyone here from Flat Rock, but, um, I did pass along all the documentation that they sent along.
Okay.
Find it real quick. I'm sorry. Um, I know Flat Rock, they're actually holding a public hearing on July 20th and it will take place at Flat Rock. I don't, I believe they're doing it by, I'm not sure if they're doing it by Zoom.
Maybe if we get that information, we could post it somewhere with folks on this call to get it. Can we do that? Okay. So we don't have to spend...
So the name of their project is the Jones Road Streamside Restoration Project.
Okay.
Leave, they're asking for $300,000 in grant money for it.
Okay. So no questions with that. So we can move on to ordinances for discussion. Model noise ordinance. I believe Jim Fedorko is here.
Yes, I'm here.
So we can have a discussion around this model noise ordinance and I think there's some pros and cons I'm hearing.
Uh, Levi Cool is on this, uh, uh, I believe.
Levi, you know about, you, you have the background on this as well? You want to speak first?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, Jim and I have been working collectively on, uh, updating the model noise ordinance. And in the last couple of months, the Board of Health has really taken the helm and, um, really pushed this matter forward. Um, what we're looking at is something the Board of Health is now proposing, which coincides and matches what are the state authorized model noise ordinances. Except for those model noise ordinances, you have to have an ordinance approved by the NJDEP. The city of Inglewood tried that historically to have a separate ordinance approved by the DEP and it was rejected. That's what is currently in place. Um, what we're providing here today is, um, something that complies with the DEP. And just for kind of background, the DEP requires that any new noise ordinance that is introduced has to have the language approved by the DEP. We cannot bury off of it. Um, there are other things we can do to address some ancillary issues, which I'm sure Jim will bring up. Uh, but as to its form, these are the models that the DEP has authorized. And you really have to follow them to have an enforceable noise ordinance. Um, again, except for a rare case where you submit a proposed ordinance to DEP and they authorize it. Um, that process, like I said, was attempted in the past and was unsuccessful. And, uh, Jim, if you want to speak to some of the specifics that, and some of the issues the Board of Health reviewed?
Thank you, Levi. Noise is a complicated issue. And, um, before you is the model noise ordinance and, and it's lengthy and it's difficult and it's very technical. I, I suggested the city council look at, so the Board of Health though, we looked at it. We've been looking at it now for at least two months closely, longer than that. And so we came up with this ordinance after debate and, and discussion. And we're presenting it to the city council as is. Uh, there are sections in here that the city council can change and those are found on page eight. That's in Roman numeral number nine, A, B, all the way up to letter G. So this model noise ordinance is what the state, um, proposes. And I believe it's a fair, I, in my past job, I was a noise control officer for about eight years and I did a lot of noise investigations. And I like the model noise ordinance. I do think it is fair. And I think those, that, uh, some other people in this, uh, in room are going to disagree with those. And so I think the city council has to look at, at those issues and then come up with a decision. I do think the city, uh, should pass the model noise ordinance in some fashion. Because right now our noise ordinance, if we were to go to court, if we were challenged on it, if we were to write a noise violation, we would probably lose because our ordinance has, hasn't been approved by the NJDEP. So, um, I, I could speak a long time about this, but I won't. I'll, I'll leave it as, as that. The Health Department, we looked at it, our board looked at it and all our board members live in the city of Inglewood. And they approved this and they're passing it on to the city council for its adoption. And you could ask me questions online now or you could, however you want to do it, Council President.
I'm gonna let the council go first. Councilman Hamer, anybody's got any questions regarding this?
I do.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Fedorko and, and then I'll, I'll have a couple for Mr. Cool. Uh, so in terms of it being enforceable, uh, oftentimes the, uh, noise issues occur at night and particularly, uh, over the weekend, uh, in the evening. If, if we are passing this, does that help us with, with an enforceable ordinance? And, uh, allow us to protect the neighbors who, who live, uh, near the noise makers? And, um, and then there's a, a deeper question, but, you know, if you'd answer that one first, that would help.
So yes, in, in this ordinance, there are two types of noise control and, um, people. There's a noise control officer and these people go to Rutgers and learn how to use a noise meter. They learn the nuts and bolts about doing a noise investigation. Then they appoint in the city, noise control investigators. And I foresee, and Chief Suffering will, I don't think he's on this. So, um, we would have a police officer become noise control investigators. And the officers would train and talk to the investigators to do things such as a dark, a barking dog, loud music coming from a neighboring pro- property. And then they would use the model noise ordinance to write a ticket or to help back the police officer for their investigation and hold them responsible, the people who are making the noise. So to answer your question, yes, this document would do that. And we could quickly respond to any noise within the town and we would have a, a good law, a good ordinance to help those noise control investigators.
So there's a, the deeper question relative to, uh, you know, noise metering and, uh, you know, protection has to do with, uh, Saturday mornings on, uh, and, uh, the, uh, the, you know, people outside of the clinic and...
Talking about?
Yes.
So in that section, uh, section nine, letter F, will, will help with that problem because right now that is, is not, um, we, we can't enforce that. With this new model noise ordinance, we will be able to enforce it. However, mind you that it is saying that any, um, noise-making device, noise amplification device is not permitted. If I could hear that, if it's plainly audible 50 feet away, that's a violation. Okay? So we have our problem with Saturday morning, but that is also any other noise-making. So if you have a, a, a march or demonstration throughout the city, those same rules and regulations will apply. So we're pretty much, we're making noise amplification devices much quieter. You cannot be projecting it way out. It's only 50 feet. So that's, that's found as again in letter F, uh, that's on page nine of the document.
Thank you. Now, uh, the Levi question has to do with, uh, construction and, you know, I, I, and I guess demolition as well. I, my concern is, uh, by adopting this, this ordinance, it expands the, uh, you know, the, the time that, uh, people can, can do construction or demolition and includes the, the weekends. So, uh, I'm, I'm in favor of not starting construction or demolition until eight o'clock in the morning as opposed to seven o'clock that the current ordinance has. And I'm, uh, real concerned that, you know, expanding this and allowing, uh, weekend and holiday construction and demolition is, uh, going to be detrimental to, to the quality of life. And, you know, if, if we have to adopt, uh, can we, can we make it, uh, more restrictive as opposed to less?
Yeah, um, Councilman, so the DEP's website does provide that, um, you know, they said that we, they have developed model noise and ordinance that can be adopted by local municipalities. The Noise Control Act allows municipalities to adopt noise control ordinances that are more stringent than the state code. The concern with that is that we then have to go before the DEP. You know, all municipal noise ordinances must be identical to the posted municipal, local, to the model local noise control ordinance to be considered as, as, as adopted, approved by the DEP. Um, what, there are alternative ways to address this, um, through either construction co- code regulations. Um, you know, limiting times for permitting of contractors. And that's another avenue to look at that. Um, again, the model noise ordinance as drafted, you know, I, I recommend this as Jim indicated he did as well. But again, to look at that in connection with other ways to potentially limit and make sure that the residents aren't dealing with noises at unreasonable hours or construction activities at unreasonable hours.
Okay, thank you. So if, if we are to move forward with this, then, um, I'd like for us to have those, those safeguards in place so that, uh, our code enforcement and, uh, you know, and police and, and engineering can, uh, help us protect the citizens and, you know, make sure that it, it is something that can be enforced and, and will be enforced. Because, uh, like I said, I'd much rather us be more restrictive in, uh, limiting the amount of time that construction and demolition can be done. And certainly not including, you know, the, the weekends and, and federal holiday.
Absolutely, Councilman. I, I began looking into potential amendments to our, our building code to include those additional protections so that, you know, while we have a fully enforceable noise ordinance, we don't permit construction outside of what is, uh, what is reasonably acceptable to the residents.
Okay. And, uh, part of that, I, I hope we'll come back with, uh, an eight o'clock start time.
Certainly.
Anybody else?
Yeah, thank you.
I would just like to say something. Um, I'd just like to, uh, second, uh, what Wayne just said. I think it's important that this be like a package deal so that we don't pass a noise ordinance. And then two years from now, we still will have the other pieces in place. So if it, logistically, if it could be constructed that way, um, I think that would be the way to go.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll make sure, you know, as this is just for discussion, it's not a first reading yet. I will make sure that we're dealing with this, uh, in, uh, in one fell swoop as opposed to piecemeal.
Okay. That's it from you, Captain?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you. Um, Levi, perhaps you can, um, reconcile for me with the litigation that we have with the abortion clinic, the First Amendment right to project your voice and this noise ordinance. Perhaps you can explain that to me?
Um, Mayor, I'd, uh, I'd respect... Mayor, I'd respectfully defer to our counsel on that, Don Klein. And if, if you'd like him to address that issue, I know he's going to be appearing for a closed session matter. And that's really, since there is pending litigation, I think that's the right venue to, to address that issue and how.
But in, in general speak, then, Levi, this is content neutral, it's a blower of leaves, of loud music from a neighbor, a dog barking, it's that kind of generic enforceable ordinance?
It is. It's very content neutral. As you read through it, you'll see nothing that deals with the content. Everyone is permitted to have their First Amendment free speech and to express it to the greatest extent they can within reason in the confines of what is really sound production devices, being loudspeakers, amplifiers, which have been determined by, you know, the Supreme Court and multiple circuit courts to be reasonable restrictions.
Thank you. I, I find it very helpful that Jim and his entire board moved it forward to the governing body, that they could create a noise control officer and an investigator with the police department, because we have more of a hazard system. And I'm not scared about the council then coming back in later generations and nuancing or making ordinances that further clarify if needed. To do nothing, Mr. Fedorko, is a mistake. To do something may open up other doors, but we can't allow people who are now home because of pandemic or otherwise to be super sensitive and not to take the noise seriously. I just don't want to make something bad worse. So I'm interested now in what the public says also. Thank you, Mr. Cool.
Councilman Cohen, you, you have any comments with this?
I, I, I obviously want to see that, you know, I'm happy to see that we're working on this. I mean, I've, you know, in, in times when I've had residents talk to me about if they want to do something in the backyard, especially at this time during COVID, if they wanted to have something. You know, the conversations are constantly too open-ended regarding what's allowable, what's not allowable, and how easy we can shut things down, even if that wasn't the intention based on the way the ordinance is currently written. So, you know, I think with the work we're doing here to specify and to make sure that the ordinance is, is done thoughtfully and appropriately and, and for, and enforceably is, you know, is something that needs to happen. So I'm just, you know, I think it's, it's good that we're, that we're getting to this.
Thank you. Mr. Cool, Mr. Fedorko, if you can put that stuff together for us so we can have a good read at it and, and to what Councilman Hamer said earlier, it's really about a quality of life. You know, we don't want people working here on Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays before eight o'clock. And too often, that is taking place around here. And, and people have made noise doing a whole lot of other things. So I think that this is, it sounds like a good start, but wait until we get the documents in front of us, and then I think, you know, we can have another strong discussion around it to get what we want to get. Mr. Cohen?
One thing I would just say that we might want to make sure to specify, we're talking about, you know, which is always, I know it's been a problem that I've encountered in my ward, oftentimes on these things, is that whoever's doing the construction will, you know, try to differentiate between the prep work for the construction of that day versus the actual construction of that day. You know, and then you get complaints saying, well, they weren't, you know, that, that, you know, that, that they were working when they're saying, well, I wasn't working, it was just unloading my truck or unloading whatever it might be, that creates, you know, a, a significant amount of noise as well, which they consider the prep. So I, I, I just think that in the language that we use here, whatever our decisions are, is that we should just consider making sure the distinction between preparatory work for such construction versus actual construction is, is very, is very clear and, and ends up being, it ends up being written in a way which is our intention, so we don't end up finding that that is a loophole that we unintentionally create.
Right. I, I think Mr. Cool will, will do that for us, and it's up to us as well to look at it when we get those documents to make sure that that doesn't happen, and also when the public has their comments and their opportunity to speak to it as well. So, you know, it's at least three layers of individuals that got to get through. So I, I'm sure that we can catch it somehow, some way, we can have a net out there.
Absolutely. Council President, if I may, just if there are any personal concerns that any of the council members have, please email them to me, and I'll review and make sure that we can incorporate them to the fullest extent legally permissible, and that we can all have a, a version to review and look at and consider along with this noise ordinance.
Sounds good. Nancy, we're gonna let the public?
So next is the items for discussion, and then the public session.
Okay, um, next items for discussion, recreation, summer program updates, I believe Merle Simon was somewhere here, I saw.
He's still.
Oh, there she is.
Sitting in the back.
And you give us an update on what's, what's going on so far this summer and what we have for the rest of the summer, please?
What we're going to do is continue with the summer feeding. It was emergency feeding from March up until the end of June. And then we moved into summer feeding and emergency feeding still.
Merle, Merle, excuse me. Can you kind of give people a little background and give them some numbers about how many people you're feeding in conjunction with the whole effort? Tell the whole story. I think that would be helpful.
Okay, we originally started out feeding in March, the border bed and delivering the food. They originally set up a station at McKay Park, Wettenwhite Stadium, and then we had let the border bed know that the kids who were at Rock Creek and the complexes that were further away, they could not get back into town. Because how they got into town was through the school buses, and once, once the schools were closed, they couldn't get into town. So we started delivering food to them, and we were delivering 675 meals in the beginning for the border bed.
A day?
That was for the week, for the week, 675 for the, for the week. And then what we started to do is that we noticed that the border bed gave us food from Monday through Friday. They didn't have anything for Saturday and Sunday, so then I contacted the Community Food Bank of New Jersey, who gave us food for the weekend. So we were delivering meals seven days a week to the kids who were in the complex. So that came up like a total of 1,100 meals all the way from March up until about the end of June. Then we, then we also would get emergency food packages from Community Food Bank, where they would give us boxes of, of foods that would be for five meals that was, that were shelf-ready. So they can have those. So they gave us to, they gave us to us in March, then we got another one in June, where they gave us over 1,100 boxes to deliver. So we, we gave that out. Then we also get food from community, I mean, from Center for Food Action for weekend snack packs. So we're delivering at least 1,000 meals a week. But since the summers began, we have now delivering about 2,300 meals, because now we get from the summer feeding from Community Food Bank of New Jersey, they give us food for five days a week. We have the border bed's food five days a week. And then we still get snack packs from Center for Food Action, and then the Community Food Bank still gives us emergency meals from time to time. So just for the month of May, we delivered about 5,600 meals. Month of June, we did 5,500 meals, and then as of the first two weeks of, of July, we've already delivered 4,700 meals for, for the summer feeding. We also have the virtual rep program that started in May. We posted 221 posts. We had over 20,000 views. In the month of June, we had 140, 40 posts with over 24,000 views. And actually, virtual recreation didn't begin until April. So we had people who were from Inglewood who were doing the entertainment and stuff for us, or whether it was tutoring, whether it was cooking, whether it was fitness, what have you. So that was the way we kept the community involved. And so now what we're doing is we're working on the pool, trying to get that up and running. We're just simply waiting for the COVID test to come back, so we can get both pools up and running.
Anything else?
That's what we have for right now. The major push is the food and getting the pools out and working on virtual recreation.
Sounds like you've been busy.
Little bit.
Yeah, it's good that, that these people could get that food, and people are giving us that food. I guess, anybody have any questions for Merle?
Uh, Council President, I have a question. Mr. Simons, where are you broadcasting from? Looks like a tent somewhere.
My, my backyard, because I actually like my flowers and stuff that are outside, so if I can just show you that.
All right.
But yeah, I'm, I'm outside in my backyard.
Good enough. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions from the Simon? If not, we're, we're gonna move to the second bullet. Engineering projects, updates. Mr. Volsi will give us what's going on for the summer, what, what's getting finished, what's getting started. Mr. Volsi?
How's everyone doing?
Good.
Next time, I gotta go before Merle, because that's a tough act to follow. Just, just quickly, I'm gonna go through some of the projects that are going on. As you, as everybody's probably noticed now, a lot of the road projects are coming to an end. 2019 road project, we're finalizing it. We're, we're almost done with Morrow, Matlitz. Just with the joint effort with Inglewood Cliffs, we just finished paving Summit Street. So we're, we're finalizing the road projects. But at the same time, we're picking up our design for the upcoming road projects in this year's capital. People Square, as many of you know, is ongoing. We're looking to replace the fencing around the park and finish the drainage work there. So we're probably a couple of weeks away, trying to push to see if we can get it done sooner than that. A lot of benches and receptacles on a lot of the parts and around town are pretty beat up, so I'm working with Ed Roy to get some of those replaced as quickly as possible. The biggest problem we're having with a lot of the vendors is getting some sort of estimation as to when orders are coming in, because so many of the the manufacturers have been impacted by the COVID, that they're really having a tough time giving a statement as to lead times, how long it's going to take to get some of the material that some of the items that we need. I see the D W Bryant system, that's basically over, and there's some punchless items that are remaining and some training that has to be done. Working with Ken over the ice rink, with the vendor to get the chiller ordered. Even though we're three months away from the next season of the ice rink, we are getting a lot of manufacturers that can't meet that deadline against, because of COVID-19. Their workforce has been impacted so much that they're saying they're going to need more than three, four months in order to manufacture the chiller and deliver it. But we are working with, uh, working with some vendors and trying to see if we can find someone that can give us the, what we need and, and the three months that we need. So we'll stay tuned and see what happens with that. Johnson Avenue, that's all designed, ready to go, it's going to be out in a couple of weeks. Overlook Place, we're finalizing the design, and that's probably going to go out at the end of the summer. McKay Field should be out in a little bit to get that completed, the natural field. The library, working with John, the library director, we have the elevator finally completed and up to code. Also working with them on some of the issues we're having with the library. Trying to see if we can get that, that going on. But that's the same. Go ahead.
Really quick, um, two questions. Sorry, but before I forget them. I, I know we had an incident on Liberty Road.
Yes.
And I know you and Ed Roy have, have spoken, so what's the status with that?
Yeah, right now, as, as you, as you may be aware, there was some, some compromise to the power, the PSC and G lines of powering the, the station there. And we also had some issues with the generator not responding quickly enough to prevent that overflow that occurred there. We've since gotten in touch with the, the vendor that maintains our generator. And, and they've stated to us, it was a faulty switch that caused it to light. So they are now going through all the generators to make sure that all of them are up to snuff, so we don't have this issue happen again. And also, we're working with PSC and G to make sure that they're aligned. Or are repaired correctly so that, you know, we can obviously have power to our generator into the system. So that's being worked on right now. I believe the switch is being switched out tomorrow. And they have men on the ground to check out the other generator.
So is that something we should have so often on schedule for them to check the generators, making sure that the wires and all that stuff is good?
Yes, they maintain our generators. So they should be going out there every month and checking out the generators to make sure that everything's running, to test them, make sure they're running, et cetera. We pressed them upon how this was not fixed up. Their answer was when they did test it, they came in, they tested it, everything was running well. Some of them, the switch, some of them did not respond the way it should have. Between the last time they tested it and now. So they are going around to make sure that all the switches are, are working properly, to make sure that we don't have issues.
Okay, so, so in other words, that would happen, that incidents all cleaned up over there on Liberty Road and, and we addressed it, or are we still, is it still open and more work has to be done?
Well, it's still open in terms of they're gonna be switching the switch out tomorrow in the generator, to make sure that that's taken care of. But Ed Roy and his group are also going around to everyone that may have been impacted, just to make sure that everyone's, everyone's taken care of, if they need any assistance from us. Ed Roy, obviously, is lending anything that we can be of help to anybody that's impacted us. So far, the two houses on Liberty that we thought would be impacted the most have actually stated that they are okay, that the impact wasn't as great as we thought it was gonna be. So the generator did pick in enough time to help a lot of residents so that we don't have much figure issue than it could have been.
Okay, so you've already done an assessment of the houses on Liberty Road, so.
Ed Roy has already done some of it, and there's a couple where no one was around when they came in, but so they're gonna continue tomorrow, they're gonna go back to their homes, make sure, see if they can catch somebody early in the morning or maybe in the afternoon. So they can assess what's going.
Okay, and my last question for you is, Matlitz Place, I know that they marked it up. After you've paved that street, were they gonna tear it up again?
Isn't that the way it always goes? What's happening there on Matlitz Place, there's a huge county line, sewer line that cuts through Matlitz. One of the manholes in that line is rather shaky and falling apart. So what I've done is actually, the new prince that actually did the work for him, I've had them contact the county, because I want them to restore the road and do the repair, not the town. So they are working with the county in terms of how they're gonna do this repair and repair this manhole correctly. Because I just don't trust that the county's gonna help the, the best care in mind. So I'd rather have the contractor, we did the work, and can we do the repair and restore the road?
All right. Anybody have any questions on this topic with Mr. Volsi? Mr. Hamer?
Is Van Ostrand and Broad coming up, and Grand?
It's the next agenda.
That's the next item.
Mr. Volsi, just if you would, would you talk us through at, at a very high level, the 2020 projects that, that you got queued up?
The 2020 projects, as you're well aware, because of the COVID, the pandemic work, work, we've been shrunk down a bit. There are two main road projects that we are moving forward with, and that's essentially Demarest Avenue and Forest Avenue. And those two are roadway construction projects are being tackled or being done, because we have grants that we were able to secure for those roadway constructions. But those are the essential two main roadway construction that we're gonna. two main roadway construction that we're gonna do this year. Um, everything else is sort of put on hold for now. As in a, as needed basis. So if things fall apart in a particular road, we do have funds set aside uh, for emergency work, but those two roads are the roadways that we're gonna do.
Since you mentioned, uh, Forest Avenue, I'd, I'd like you to, uh, give some strong consideration to the projects that I, I keep bringing up. And one of those is the dredging, the completion of the dredging uh, alongside McKay Park all the way through Forest Avenue, as far out to Overpek as we can get. And, uh, the second thing is the, the pump over, uh, whatever that terminology is called at Forest Avenue, uh, that has to be reworked at some point and particularly because we've got another, uh, couple of potentially another couple of hundred units coming online just, uh, just ahead of, of that, that, uh, that switch over or pump over. And, uh, we, we absolutely need to, to get some county attention paid into that, uh, especially since, you know, all of the the silt that, that comes downstream from Northern Valley and, uh, you know, comes through Inglewood through McKay Park out to Overpek tends to rest in, uh, in McKay Park. So, uh, however, we can, uh, get the use of some county funds to assist in in making that a, a cleaner and smoother, uh, passage, you know, would be helpful. And, you know, the side that we'll have to do, you know, is from DPW, but uh, we gotta get rid of whatever, whatever growth has taken place along that channel or inside that channel and alongside that channel to, uh, to make it a smoother, uh, smoother passage.
Yep, since our, since our conversation, I've actually started the ball rolling on that. Uh, making everybody aware of where we're heading regarding just what our concerns are. So we're just waiting for some sort of feedback and how we're gonna move forward.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. C.
Mayor?
Thank you. So thank you, um, Franz, for this stupendous job and a lot of moving parts. The Forest Avenue is really a mess and I'm happy to hear that that's really gonna go despite, uh, the tapering down of projects. The last several managers in the last two years all promised me, and I know you and I have spoken about this, a crosswalk behind One Eleven West Street for a gentleman on a wheelchair. It seemed like an easy task. It was studied. I think I spoke to Yancy about this recently. Has there been any progress? Has this been approved? Has it been painted already? There's a gentleman with one leg and a wheelchair. I can't look him in the face every time I see him because it seemed like an easy task, a no brainer, as they say. You can't cross safely from the, uh, Inglewood Housing to any place without that crosswalk.
Mayor, we actually have a couple crosswalks that we're looking to do this year, and that is one.
Okay, so just to be specific, it's Demarest and what's that little back street? Is it West Street or?
It's, no, it's, it's, it's Van Broad Street in Demarest. That's where the crosswalk used to be.
If you have to get back, it'll be, it'll be painted and drawn during the summer, after the summer?
It will be put back this year as, as well as some other intersections that are vital. Uh, Inglewood Avenue and Armory is one of them. So we're looking at several intersections that we're looking to redo this.
So in the next few weeks or months, is that what's expected?
Yes, exactly. It's, it's probably gonna happen. I don't wanna say the next few weeks. Uh, let's say that in the next few months it should happen.
Thank you, Franz. And again, for everything that you, you've done on the Broad Avenue corridor, which is up next. I really wanna thank you for your personal involvement. Things have really improved.
On this bullet right here. Does anybody from the public, well, the public can ask after this. Let's move on to the next one. The traffic, uh, investigation report, Franz, for Broad Avenue?
Uh, really quickly, um, obviously there's, there's a report out. We finalized everything. It's a comprehensive look at the, uh, deficiencies and the needed improvement along that survey stretch of Broad Avenue, which is essentially between Van Ostrand and, and Linden. And we looked at it obviously in order to maximize pedestrian safety and reduce vehicular acts. Um, just key components, uh, in the report. Like I said, it's a lengthy, comprehensive report. Yeah, the council members can actually look at it if they're eager, but a few things that come into mind that, that, you know, that need to be tackled or recommended, obviously. Signage improvements, striping. Um, the bump outs, uh, even though they are recommended, um, they, they would have to be, uh, something that has to be designed, et cetera. So right now I would recommend that pavement treatment be done. Uh, it's essentially the striping of the intersection to basically give drivers a visual, a visual impairment in terms of where they can, can go. So essentially what we'll do is narrow the driving, uh, the driving line so, um, motorists have to slow down. Obviously, the installation of crosswalks, uh, with the, uh, push button, rapid flash and beacon, uh, would help. And, uh, I mean, the, the biggest, you know, the, the, the biggest thing or the biggest bite of this is the modification of the, uh, traffic signal at Broad and Van Ostrand. But all that together will, will, will significantly enhance the safety aspect along Broad Ave, the Broad Avenue corridor over there. Again, whether we do it all at once or a piecemeal, um, it's something that we'll discuss how to, uh, you know, how to move towards getting this all accomplished. Altogether, just so the, the council has an idea, it's, it's a half a million dollar project. It's a, it's a big, it's a big project. It's not, you know, it's not something that's small, but again, it can be done piecemeal. Uh, and you can tackle it one bit at a time.
And I, okay. Hiya.
Yep.
So, so a few things. First of all, Franz, I know this has been something that, you know, we've all been working on for I don't know how long at this point. You know, and, and I, I do appreciate, um, you know, the intense work you've done, you know, uh, on this and the comp, and how comprehensive the report was. You know, obviously we know this is a corridor which we saw a, a accident with a near fatality, um, right before COVID. We've had multiple other fatalities right in this area. You know, one of the reasons, you know, and, and I, and I think, you know, your report says it as well. But what you look at in that area of Broad Avenue, where it's wide, but it's not multiple lanes necessarily. You know, people speeding around into lanes that aren't really lanes. You know, and, and, you know, so when we talk about the bump outs and the crucial need for the bump outs, um, you, you're, you're dealing with a very unique situation where, you know, the striping definitely helps, but unfortunately we've had, you know, uh, you know, our onboard avenue for quite some time. You know, when cars are trying to get around each other there and there's not, no, there's no physical thing to obstruct them from doing so. You know, they're, they're going into lanes that aren't lanes. And the expectation of pedestrians over there is not that a car is going to, you, you, I mean, you can't have the expectation as a, as a pedestrian that cars are going to break the law. Uh, that, that, that shouldn't be a premise that we should be, um, you know, okay with. You know, obviously, one, one of the issues you have over there also is um, I think you have, um, a, a unusual amount of incredibly high density pedestrian traffic. The fact that it's, you know, right near the Abbot's Tower synagogue. You know, the fact that you have literally on, you know, Friday nights and holidays on, during the Sabbath. You, you're talking about, you know, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people going in that area, in that corridor, which is, you know, which if you look at the last, you know, couple of major accidents that have included pedestrians there. They've all been on, you know what, I, I don't, I won't say all, but the ones that I'm, I'm keeping in mind. You know, they've been on the Sabbath. They've been exactly during that time when you've had that high pedestrian traffic. Both, both of the, 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 the most recent really tragic ones happened on Friday nights. Exactly because of those reasons. You know, I, I, you know, the, the, you know, and like you said, you have a multitude of issues over there. You know, the, the, the striping, I think, obviously is something we can do immediately and, and quickly and and, and start getting that done. The traffic signals on Van Ostrand and over there, um, have created a big problem. I think another thing we have, that we've talked about also is when you look at the Van Ostrand component of this, also you've had, you know, we need, we need increased enforcement just of some of the regulations and ordinances we have over there, such as the, the trucks and larger things that are going down there causing quality of life issues that are not allowed as per the signage and as per the ordinances. We don't have to change anything there other than make sure that it gets reputation for heavy enforcement. But I, I, I do wanna stress very strongly that, um, I, I, I think the bump outs that you recommended, you know, I, I know the fact that, you know, it's been discussed very widely, um, within the second ward. Um, you have a, 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 a very, very positive feeling about it. Um, most people feel that the situation, you know, you know, prior to my tenure on the council, we had the, uh, we had the speed bumps or humps or whatever they were called. You know, which they thought, you know, slowed traffic down in that corridor, which were ultimately taken out. I mean, that was, you know, before any of us on the council were here now, so um, I don't think any of us, I don't even think you, I don't know if you were even around back when they were taken out. But obviously there was, you know, what, what it does for me is it demonstrates beyond what I see just being right there anyway, is that there's been a long time recognition that this area is a problem and this area is dangerous. You know, that might not have worked, but we never substituted that with anything else. And while I think the striping is critical and helpful, I, 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 I don't think that's going to ultimately be, I, I don't think that's enough. Um, I, I don't, I, I think unless you physically obstruct those extra areas with those bump outs, um, I, I, I don't thi, I, I think people there are still gonna be in peril. You know, and, and, you know, they, they've worked downtown. You know, they, they've been aesthetically nice. You know, you have a lot of seniors crossing and it limits the amount of, of, of space that people have to cross. As you know, there are no traffic lights there. Um, you know, we've tried to get more stop signs there. Sometimes we've been successful, sometimes we have not, but there's not enough of that. You know, I, 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 I just wanna stress that I think, um, you know, the bump outs and the full, I'm taking advantage of full category of your recommendations as soon as possible and as soon as feasible. It's critical to just, you know, traffic safety and pedestrian safety, um, you know, in that corridor. You know, also, like I said, there, there's I know in your recommendations, because we did in the traffic studies, we also did the Van Ostrand corridor there, which all intersects and it's all part of one larger sphere there. You know, obviously, you know, there's been a lot, there's been a lot of complaints over there for a lot of reasons. I know in your recommendations also was, um, making the, uh, the extra lane down near the Ralsman Building to make sure that there's a turning, you know, there's a turning lane and a, and a regular lane, uh, which will help the flow of traffic, which will hopefully, you know, help the flow on the block and, 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 uh, make it a little bit more, less hazardous when, uh, New Jersey Transit has added, I don't know how many buses there or trucks and whatnot over the last couple of years, but the enforcement of the truck ordinance down there on top, you know, is I think the next thing, but with the enforcement, the truck ordinance and that extra turning lane. You know, and with the, the, the better, um, more synchronized and additional traffic lights. You know, we're talking about a turning light, um, on Van Ostrand and Broad. I think those all collectively, you know, um, do get us to a better place, but the only way you're gonna, in my mind, the only way you're gonna stop the speeding on Broad Avenue in the way that it's happening now is by those, those bump outs, you know, and, and I just ask that, um, you know, that everybody, you know, uh, you know, from the council just recognize that we've already gone through a number of fatalities and a number of near fatalities. All of pedestrian, all, all, all of it, mostly, those have been of the pedestrian nature. So you know, when you look at the police reports, um, that we've gotten from the police in terms of where, you know, high crash areas. You know, the numbers in, you know, in those zones are definitively and significantly higher from a basic statistical analysis than anywhere else in that area. It's a problem zone. It needs the attention. It needs serious attention. I think Franz, you've done a wonderful job in giving us some great ideas and recommendations. I think, you know, speaking to folks in the community, I think they're very happy with your recommendations. You know, but now it's obviously up to all of us to implement those recommendations. And I just, you know, I hope that, um, you know, this council will be supportive in making sure that we can protect the, you know, the safety and lives of everybody in that corridor. Thank you.
Just, uh, thank you, Councilman. Just to clarify on mine, the bump outs are the ultimate goal. Obviously, as, as I stated, the bump out and modification of the signal are more, are gonna take longer to do than the other, than the other, than implementing the other, uh, the other ideas. Uh, the bump outs, again, the reason why the bump outs are sometimes difficult to design is because they impact the flow of water along the road. And though, the, the, when it rains, the water runs along the curb line. You put a bump out there, the water has nowhere to go. Then you create a puddle. Obviously, in winter time it becomes ice, et cetera. So there's a lot that goes into designing the bump out. So that's why it'll take a lot longer to implement those. But, uh, you know, as a temporary stop or temporary measure, striping it would be the next best thing. Prior to implementing the bump out.
But, but I, 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 I think we're all, you know, very understanding and, and, and we know, and, and you've, you've been with us as you know, in the engineering capacity for more years than I can count. So, you know, we, we, you know, I, 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 I trust you in all of this. Um, I, I think what the community, you know, really wants to see is that we're having progress, that if it takes that kind of complicated engineering, you know, that, 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 uh, you know, then let's get started on that. You know, the, all, all of the, you know, we've, we've already, you know, you, you know, like for instance, you know, I, I look at, you know, we've always had the, um, when, when, when the PD puts up their, their sign saying you're, you know, you're going X amount of miles per hour over the speed limit. It's in front of the Roosevelt. It's right there. There's a reason why they do that. Whenever they do the, um, the, the, um, the, the sting, I guess, to catch speeders, it's always in the corner. It's always, I mean, I, I used to almost, you know, wanna offer them coffee in the morning because they're right there on Madison, right in my house. But, um, you know, they're right on Madison. They're right in that same area. You know, i- it's proven that even with the enforcement there, the enforcement doesn't work because part of the problem is the police, um, when they do their enforcement, you know, that they're doing it typically in the morning rush hour when, when volume is higher. The problem is, is a lot of the problems that are having in accidents are not necessarily attributable to a volume, but they're attributed actually to when there's less volume and people can speed. So, um, you know, I do commend the police for being there and I've seen them all the time on Madison, you know, Madison pulling people over and with the signage there. But, uh, you know, that, that, that's not, that's not solving the problem. You know, I do think we need to see, um, if it's, you know, a difficult engineering, um, you know, analysis that needs to be done. That's fine, but let's get started. You know, let, 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 let's, let's start that work because the sooner we get started, the sooner we get to the endpoint here. You know, I, I, I also, I also just would be remiss if I didn't mention, you know, for a second, when I'm mentioning all of your hard work in there, because we've had with the community, you know, meeting after meeting after meeting. You know, on, you know, before the pandemic and, and, um, the mayor was a big part of that as well. So, you know, I just wanna, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize, you know, all the mayor's efforts and our coordination here as well. You know, but it's been a real team effort and, um, you know, the PD's been involved, the fire department's been involved. You know, uh, your, who's online has been involved in these meetings. The mayor, I mean, we, 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 community leaders on, on, you know, and community residents on both sides. I mean, this has been a very significant effort. You know, and I just think it's important that we see it through as quickly as possible. I, I, I just, Yancy, if you can just, uh, answer me one quick question, I, I, I know this is a question I've been getting, you know, throughout the, the past couple of days. And I know people are asking for it right now. My understanding is, is that the report that Franz put together would be available to the public after this meeting. Is, is that accurate?
Yes, we'll post it on the website.
Okay, so everybody will be, I know people are asking. It'll be posted on the website. I guess tomorrow morning or whenever you, you know, as soon as you, yeah. So that, that, that full report and it's, it's, you know, it is what, twenty pages or so? I mean, I remember the recommendations didn't start till page eighteen. So, or something like that. So, um, it, it is very comprehensive. So I do thank you, Franz, for, you know, for not taking it lightly and for, um, and for digging deep on this. But, um, if we can get moving on it, uh, that'd be even better. Thank you so much, everybody.
Uh, anybody else have anything on this topic from the council members? If not, I'm gonna move to the next bullet.
Carl's, if I can, just briefly, and I'll make it very brief.
Please briefly, yeah.
Michael did a, a, an excellent and exhaustive job. I lost a neighbor on the corner who crossed the street and lost his life. We almost lost another neighbor who had this accident. To my mind, half a million dollars is low money compared to what the cost of any one life would be. And I don't say that knowing how every single dollar is so hard. And a half a million dollars to correct this is really appreciated, Franz. But that bump out has to be there. There has to be some kind of visual where people driving along that corridor will slow down. Because all of us are spending more time around, um, our homes now. See that people have less regard. It's a combination of a lot of different things going on. And I just want to urge whatever reports are now released to the public, for everyone to just take a deep breath and understand that we have somebody who's on our side here with Franz, with the council. And obviously, the best product is what we're looking for. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I think Franz and his communication is all on board to get all that stuff done. I think he was just trying to measure expectations in terms of how it's going to be done and when it's going to be done. I didn't hear him say anything that he was against anything. He just let us know what the numbers are and what it's going to take, as usual. Thank you, Franz. The, the next bullet is junior police and fire academy.
Excuse me, can we comment the public a little bit or is this all one sided?
Excuse me, the public will speak after this. We have a public session where you can comment.
Oh, not per item? Excuse me.
You, you can talk about those items, you can pick any of those items when it comes to the public session and talk to all of them. Everybody is still on who, who spoke to these items. So after, we got two more items and then you can talk to whatever items you would like. Is that okay?
You did himself.
Yeah. So, as I was saying, the Junior Police Academy and Fire Academies, summer programs. Um, I think that we need to find a way to reinstitute these programs so that we do some community outreach to our young people. And I just would encourage during the budget process that we find the dollars to, to have these things, to have these programs going. I think it's just a good view of community policing, community relationship. And for the investment, invest in our young people, I think that this is all a positive thing. So I will be pushing this, uh, I just think it's a good thing so our young people get to know these people. And, and not only that, they build relationships with these folks. I mean, it's one thing to work in a town, it's another thing to get to know the people as well. And the last bullet, I think myself and Councilman Hamer will have some comments about the building heights and setbacks. Councilman Hamer, if you want to go first, you, you can, or I could start it and you can follow me.
Why don't you start? I'm glad to follow.
Well, um, being a member of the planning board, I, I, I voted against a number of projects because of their height, because it gives the canyon effect. But it also takes away what people have invested their money in suburbia. So I believe the perfect example is 40 Bennett Road. If you go down and see that monstrosity and what people are going to have to look up at every day when they come out of their homes from Bennett Road, Elmore Avenue, Inglewood Avenue, is, is just an example of what we cannot lo- we, we can't have in the city of Inglewood because, or have it in one part of the city of Inglewood either. Because I think it gives a look to Inglewood that is not what the people signed up for. And we have to, we have to be considerate to that because they've, they've worked hard and they invested their hard earned dollars and they, they want a certain look to their neighborhood. Because there's one community, many neighborhoods in Inglewood, contrary to what people say. And I think it's important that we, we do that. And when you look at all these buildings that have been built recently in the fourth ward, they're all towers and they're all canyons. And if you go down Inglewood Avenue, you know, you're not going to have sun on one side of the street. So we just have to be cognizant of that and we have to ma- make it known. We can, you can still build, but you just ain't going to build at those heights. I don't think it's fair to the community. I don't think it's fair to the residents here and especially in one side of town. I mean, and so we, we definitely have to look into, to that and, and, and bring it down to a reasonable height. I don't want this to look like Hoboken because I don't think that's what people bought into. They bought into suburbia and they want to, and that's what they want. So I, I, I want to keep it in suburbia. So Mr. Hamer, you can go do what you got to do, speak.
Totally agree with all of what you said and thank you for, uh, you know, the comments that you made. I think it's ultra important for us to, uh, you know, reduce the heights on, uh, the buildings that are built in town, particularly in, in the zones where, uh, you know, we, we've increased density. And, you know, I, I, I just think the optics are horrible. I think from a safety perspective, congesting, uh, those areas and pressing that, that many people into that space. If, if that's the desire that, that we're going to have all across Inglewood, then, you know, we should have those, those real conversations. And I don't think it should be isolated to, you know, the, uh, you know, the areas that, that have been impacted by the building of late. So, um, as soon as we can get those heights lowered, uh, the better off all of Inglewood will be. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments on this topic from the council governing body?
I do. I also support preserving the suburban feel. In Inglewood, it's why people move here. When you talk to people around town, it's one of their top priorities. And I think that it could therefore be one of our top priorities. I don't think it means anti-growth. I think it just means being strategic in, in how we grow and allowing the will of the residents to, to be heard on this important issue.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? If not, Nancy, we're going to go to the public session?
Yes.
Two minutes, name, address. You have two minutes to speak on any topic on the agenda.
Same for everybody. If you want to speak, bottom of your screen, there's a reactions button, press that. There's raise hand, um, and you'll, you'll go in queue and we'll just call you in order. First one on is Rabbi Popko.
Thank you so much. My name is Hyon Popko. I live at 324 Autobahn Road here in Inglewood. I'm the senior rabbi at Congregation Avat Torah on Broad Avenue. And I just want to speak just for a very brief moment about Broad Avenue's safety. I'm not going to repeat the many excellent things that were articulated by Michael Cohn and Michael Wilds. I just want to, first of all, I just want to acknowledge Jonathan Katz, who's on this call right now. His father-in-law, Dr. Paul Kudowitz, was hit and killed on Broad Avenue a number of years ago. And it was last December that a member of our congregation was very, very seriously, seriously injured and still recovering, uh, that I was this past December. I, I very much appreciate all the work that Franz and everyone else has put into preparing this report. I know, uh, I know it's very important that there be a process. Obviously, I would love to see it happen, you know, yesterday. We all, we all would, I get that. I appreciate, you know, the fact that, you know, we can only do striping right now. I, I know we all recognize that striping is, is kind of a, you know, a minimal step because people have habits and the people who come down this, this road, which is a residential street used as a commercial thoroughfare. You know, it's, uh, you know, people just go around anyway. Uh, and because my time is short, I, I, I just want to urge that we, we move as expeditiously as possible. Again, I know these things take time. But just the one thing I would add to the conversation is that I know that the police sometimes enforce the speed, but there's absolutely no enforcement of the crosswalks. There's a sign that says state law yield to pedestrians. Nobody yields to pedestrians. The, 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 uh, the city could make a lot, a lot of money, uh, generate a lot of revenue by handing out tickets for people that don't stop for pedestrians at the corner of Van Oostren and Broad. Thank you so much.
Next is Diane Jansen.
Oops, hello, I'm, thank you so much. I, I would like to second, uh, that, those comments that Catherine Glenn made about strategic development. And some of us moved here to live in suburbia and some of us have stayed here to stay in suburbia. So I'd just like to comment on that. And heights and setbacks, I think I agree are so very important. But I like how you phrased it. I think a majority of the residents agree that that is what is important. With respect to crashes, um, in the city of Inglewood from 2014 to 2018, there were 740 crashes in and around West Palace State Avenue. Forty-six of those crashes involved bikes or pedestrians. Ninety-two people were injured, five killed, two on West Palace State Avenue, one on West Demerit and two on Demerit. So those are some areas I would hope we would look into also. There were 400 crashes in and around the public schools. Twelve crashes involved bike or pedestrians, 52 injured, four killed on Liberty and Belmont Street, Demerit Avenue and Tena Fly Road, West Demerit Avenue and Waldo Place. So as we move forward, I hope that we are looking at the city as a whole and the top priority areas, we address them for everyone. And this is, I live in the second ward and I do understand what was brought up tonight. And I do agree with all those issues. But I don't hear us talking about the issues I just raised from these other crash reports and that concerns me. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy.
Next is Amy Bullock. Do you want to unmute yourself?
Hi, good evening, Amy Bullock, 312 Howland Avenue. I just wanted to ask about what is the status with Liberty School and the initiative that Joyce Dudley was working on? We had a couple of meetings and then everything went silent. So I'd like to know whether or not you received a report from Ms. Dudley on what her findings were from the few meetings that did occur? If there have been any communications with Metro about their proposal and where, where we're going with that? And the reason I bring this up is because at a time like this, that space could have been such a benefit to the community and the school district with what we have already gone through and what we will be facing going forward. So it is disgusting that that building is sitting there and the community needs it and cannot use it because there has been a lack of action. So if you could please provide an update on what is going on with, um, that, I would appreciate it.
We're still working with Ms. Dudley on it. There were some personal issues that she was dealing with. So we expect to get a report in the near future. And then we'll decide based on that and based on a number of other things, what we're going to do with Liberty School. But we're, we're, we're working on that as well. As far as Metro Church, and Mr. Hamer, correct me, have we recently heard from Metro Church about anything?
No, not at late. They, they made a presentation some time ago. We have not been through a, an RFP process to, to decide what it is in the council we want to do and how we want to communicate with Liberty. So, uh, no, not as yet, not at late.
But there will be some work around that subject sooner than later.
Anyone else, again, members of the public, if you wish to speak. At the bottom of the screen, there's a reactions button. Click on that, there's a raise hand. There's a Tasha Urbanowski, sorry if I mispronounced your name. Have to unmute yourself.
Sorry, no, very well done. Tasha Urbanowski, 314 St. Nicholas Avenue. I wanted to thank Jim and the Board of Health for taking on the noise ordinance, making sure we have something enforceable. And I just wanted to support those who spoke in favor of making sure that we're not, uh, starting construction on weekends and holidays. I, I think that's a, a smart thought. And if we can't work it into the noise ordinance, then making it a package deal with the construction code, I think is a smart thing. Um, and I, I agree also with the not starting before eight. That would be really helpful.
Thank you. Nancy.
Anyone else raising it? No, Kevin is just raising his hand. Kevin, Mr. Lake?
Hi, Kevin Lake, 320 North Woodland Street in Inglewood. Just want to say that I'm adamantly opposed to the noise ordinance to the extent that it permits construction and demolition on Saturdays, Sundays and holidays. The current ordinance prohibits demolition and construction on those days. And I don't see how the Board of Health, whose job it is to protect the health of the residents of Inglewood, how they can argue that allowing construction on weekends is at all going to benefit my health. I'm going to take the two minutes to go through as quickly as I can a demolition and a construction process. When the demolition starts, the bulldozers arrive at the building and start demolishing it. Clouds of dust start to arise on the building because typically the water is shut off and they're not able to spray the building. If you're on the Fourth of July, if you're outside having a barbecue with your family and friends, these clouds of dust will then get blown into your backyard. You'll now have to move indoors and shut the doors and windows and have your barbecue inside because of that. Then the tree removers come in, they start with the buzzsaws, they start tearing down the trees. They bring their wood chippers, they start loading those all day long. After that comes the demolition, the dynamite, the blasting so people can have a basement. The blasting lasts for a week, week and a half. They have warning blasts, three for like 20 seconds, two for 10 seconds, then the detonation. The detonation is so bad that your house shakes. Then there's a final blast. Whatever rocks they can't remove by dynamiting, they now clean with jackhammers. It's like jackhammering all day long to get the foundation done. Then the trucks start coming and going with the concrete, start pouring the foundation. Every time they back up, the trucks start beeping, beeping, beeping. Then you get the lunch and breakfast trucks arriving. They pull up in front with, with food for the workers. They blast the horn on their cars to notify the workers that they're outside and there's food. This goes on every single day. You have workers who are arriving, they're parking on the street, they're coming and going. You have the power saws, they're cutting the wood, they're cutting the two-by-fours, they're doing the framing. How allowing this to occur on a Saturday, Sunday or a holiday benefits my health? I fail to understand. So I'm adamantly opposed to this ordinance to the extent that it permits construction and demolition on weekends and holidays, whether it's after eight o'clock, nine o'clock, 10 o'clock. We don't permit it now and don't think we should permit it going forward.
Mr. Lake, I, I believe we, we, that's what myself and I think Mr. Hamer said it initially about we don't want it at eight o'clock and we don't want it on weekends, Saturdays, Sundays and holidays. I think that that's what we said and Mr. Cool, the attorney who will be drafting that, agreed with that as well. I, correct me, Mr. Hamer, Mr. Fedorko, or Mr. Cool, if I'm saying something wrong, if I'm misspeaking?
No, uh, Council President, this is, uh, this is Levi. You know, just as a point of clarification, even though those activities are permitted, they're restricted in time. They cannot start be- before 9:00 AM on, uh, weekends, 8:00 AM during the weekday. And they also have to comply with the noise ordinance, meaning that there's certain decibel levels that they can't exceed. One thing I think is a follow-up and I'll speak to, this is Fedorko about this, is providing an example of what those noises would be. Demolition or, um, construction activities would certainly be more regulated before 9:00 AM. At some point, if somebody has to move rocks, they have to remove rocks. But within reason. And that's one thing that I think I've heard from the council president and council members that we're going to work to do.
But why isn't that just prohibited on weekends and holidays? Why allow it at all?
If that's a council prerogative, that's what we'll work through.
The other question I have is how many noise summonses were issued in the past year that were contested?
There, there weren't many.
And why are we, then why are we bringing this issue up? If it's, if it's not an issue that needs to be addressed, why are we even bringing it up?
Most of those construction folks know that you're not allowed to work in Inglewood on Saturday and Sunday.
But if you change the law, they will know that you can.
It's possible.
It's probable. And if there have been no summonses that have been issued in the past year... And if there have been no summonses that have been issued in the past year, which were successfully contested, then I don't see why the Board of Health is spending its time for the past several months even bothering with this.
Typically, though, those construction workers, when you go out there and tell them you can't work, they're not going to make, they're not going to cause any trouble. They're not, they're not, they want to make their money and go home. So if you tell them, look, you can't work, they're not going to contest anything. That's why. If I go to a business, they're going to say, okay, I'll turn it down, I'll stop.
And you can only, you can only tell them not to do it.
You're right. And I, and the Board of Health knows that. We talked about that. We talked about this problem on Saturday and Sunday, and I knew that this would be an issue with the residents of Englewood. I think if you change, and you could certainly, you could pull that out, you could pull that section out of the,
Right.
of the ordinance, but beware, two things could possibly happen. One is the DEP will reject it and say, no, you have to allow construction on Saturday and Sunday. That could happen. And then number two is if you do pull it out and they, and they, and they approve it, the state regulation allows work to be done on Saturday and Sunday. Now, I'm going through the legal aspect of it, but if the, if the construction company, they, they may have some fallback and say, well, look, the city, the city doesn't allow it, but the state does allow it. I don't know how that would mesh. That would be an issue for Levi Cool. So those are the consequences if we change it. We could certainly pull it out and let's send it down and see what happens.
Or you could not change it.
If we don't, we, we have to change, we have to revise the noise ordinance.
You just told me that there have been very, very, very few summonses that were issued. So what's the problem?
Great, but when it does, when we do need it, we don't have it.
But it hasn't.
We need, we, we need it for a couple of other issues in the city of Englewood. We need a noise ordinance. We need one that we could rely on.
Then we need to discuss in public, and we need to discuss in public why we need one.
Well, we will. And when they draft up, we will have other public discussions around.
I like Levi Cool's idea of not allowing the construction workers on Saturday and Sunday. I like that idea. I think we should try that. That way we get our noise ordinance passed, and then we just tell the construction workers, look, you can't work on Saturday and Sunday. It's in our, it's in, it's in the building code, and they're not going to fight, they're going to say, okay. I think, I like that idea. That's,
I think if it's not broken, don't fix it.
Hey, Jim.
It is broke.
I think that, let us have these other discussions because they must have missed what we're really talking about, what's going on on Engle Street and all those other places there that give us the latitude to have some enforcement actions, right?
Yes.
So we, there's more to come on this, and we'll engage all the public as much as you want on this. After Mr. Cool and Mr. Fedorko come back to us, we'll put this back on and we can continue to have this conversation with the public.
Thank you.
So we got some more work to do. Thank you.
Next is Jason S. Have to unmute yourself. There you go. Thank you.
I think I'm muted. Can you see me and hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much for the time. I just wanted to comment on the safety concerns around Broad Avenue and Van Ostrand. I too live just a few houses away from that intersection. I wanted to both agree and thank the mayor and Councilman Cohen for their comments. I think that they're both spot on. This is a pretty dangerous intersection. One of the incidents that occurred, I think probably close to ten years ago, was that the prior owner of my home was killed at the intersection. That was the incident many years ago. And it's unfortunate that the situation's kind of stayed the same even since that tragedy. This is something I believe we should immediately address. With the COVID situation and everybody at home, there's an increased traffic pedestrian flow in that particular area. We've witnessed an even greater increase of traffic with children, mine included, using the intersection to walk or just the surrounding areas. Can't tell you how many times we've witnessed cars flying by at excessive speeds through that intersection. So we ask that the council do everything in its power in order to address the suggestions that were made earlier today and do it as quickly as they possibly can. Thank you.
Nancy, anybody else?
I'm not seeing anyone else with their hand. We'll go to the next page. We're actually two pages of people. Does anyone else have their, oh, Mr. Hoyle?
Yeah, I don't know how to do this, this hand raise thing. I only see a clap and a thumbs up on it.
The clap is the,
Reactions.
Yeah, that's a,
I only get a thumbs up and a clap.
The clap is the hands up.
Yeah. Say that again?
The clap is the hands up.
Okay. All right. So I just wanted to comment on the the construction at forty Bennett Road. That project, yes, it is going to be, it's going to change the landscape tremendously. And there's a lot of comments I've heard about not signing up for that. I really didn't sign up for that when I bought my home on Elmore Avenue. And it's just going to change my quality of life and the residents around me, their quality of life. But more importantly, I'm a bit concerned with the engineering aspect and what's to come. And I just wanted to pose this question to you again, Franz, with regards to the sewage system. Are we going to be headed for a disaster when that project comes online with the sewage system? Because I don't want sewage in my home. And I posed this question at the planning board before the project was even a green light.
Let me answer that. What we've done, part of what we're doing is the engineer has submitted an assessment as to how much flow is going to be increased in our lines, et cetera. And our lines have been TVed, evaluated, et cetera. They're going to do all of that. And our line's capacity right now can take on what they're, what is being proposed at that, you know, for that site. So no, you are not going to be subjected to, you know, to additional flows on your property or anything like that. But, and again, from speaking with Wayne, we are looking at ways to even further increase our capacity of making sure that there's no adverse effect from any additional construction.
Okay. And then councilmen brought up a topic about with the schools doing police and fire academies. Is that what the academy is for the police and fire?
No, no, no.
These are for the fire and police departments to have the junior academies that they used to have in the summertime for kids and spend time talking about these functions and, you know, getting to build relationships with the kids so they can do some community outreach. You know, they need to be more visible in the community, and this is a way they can be more visible in the community. And as I remember, the cost was minimal at best. So we need to invest in our young people, and this is one way that we can do that. Do I have opportunity to poll the council members? Because I thought that was a topic of discussion, and I didn't hear any discussion on it. It was just one comment from the council. Well, if you want to poll them, I'll open the floor so you can poll them, but. I like to, I'd just like to know what the thinking is from the mayor, from the mayor and the rest of the council members.
Well, you obviously know what my opinion is, right?
Yes, I did hear yours.
Okay.
No comment?
Who, me?
Lieutenant, you're looking for a, an opinion on whether or not we would want to have a junior police and fire academy program?
Or what your thoughts may be on it?
We should never have discontinued it. We don't have a dare program in the schools. The only incidents that bring police, fire, and the public are sometimes police activity and fires. The more our youngsters can engage with public servants at a young age and tender age, I'm reminded of our chief, who is now thirty-five years with our department, who sat in the Lincoln School with his arm out the window, saying, one day I want to be a firefighter, and that's in the greatest tradition. I think we should be starting at a very young, tender age with our police and fire heroes, our men and women who are fine and brave, and getting them into the schools. I wore a police uniform for ten years with the NYPD. It's in a great tradition. It gets people to respect not just public service, but to appreciate the burdens of that job. And I, for the life of me, did not understand when I retired and came back how all these programs disappeared. And the police, I met with the head of the protesters for the Black Lives Matter on several occasions now with the police chief, deputy chief. I helped to bring him into the fire chief. I already spoke to Chief Anderson about it. We have to make sure that our youngsters understand the conversations that are going on and the responsibility is bilateral. It's not just the police and the fire treating residents properly. It's residents appreciating their responsibility to turn in active shooters, loose bullets, and content and intelligence information to the officers and the firefighters too. So, you know, you're preaching to the choir, as I would say, Reverend. Let's get the money, and if we don't have it in the local city, a budget, because it's a difficult year, I'm sure our grant-writing Millennium strategies can find us content and money to do this. That's my opinion.
All right. In the city of Englewood, it seems that we pride ourselves in being the leaders and ushering things in. And I just think that it's quite the investment to invest in our youth. And another way to achieve that would be to have a partnership with the school system. And I would hope that at some point, maybe the council would like to entertain some kind of partnership with the Board of Education to get some kind of programming at the high school level and the middle school level that's geared to emergency services in the city of Englewood. And that would also address what the councilmen was speaking of with getting the youngsters in this community involved in what the emergency services may offer them later on in life if they choose to go that route.
They may want to do an EMT program, Joe.
That's emergency services as well.
I've been EMT for twenty-seven years. They may want to have an EMT program for the high school led by a police, fire, and ambulance service while they're in school. It's something to talk to Mr. Kravitz about.
I was just hoping that maybe the council would kind of partner with the Board of Education and kind of talk about.
Joe, we'll handle that. We'll handle that.
The other thing that I wanted to say was,
You want to poll everybody or you just want to let that go?
I just have a, Mr. Cobb, I just, may I?
Yes.
Okay, so I spoke to both, when you asked that this topic be placed on the agenda, I spoke to the leadership of both police and fire departments, because I also wanted, you know, asking why this was not being done this year, because it has been done since I've been here, maybe not all, every year, but definitely the last year, there was both police and fire academies. And the concern is because it's COVID-related. As you know, all of our summer camps have been put on hold this year, and these academies take the form of camps. So the concern is that they could not be done safely this year due to the pandemic, and that's why they were placed on hold. That's what I was told.
I, you know what, it was never brought up to be done this year, period, on COVID. Councilman Hamer, did they ever bring that up to us?
No, but, you know, it was, it was discussed, you know, as an outside program. And it wasn't part of the overall budget, as I understand it, but the programs have been offered, and because of the situation that we experienced for the last several months with the pandemic, it never materialized this year. But I do believe the funding was inside the budgets. You know, it just wasn't acted on primarily because of COVID.
Well, we'll make sure it's acted on next year.
And it's, as you said earlier, it's not that expensive and, you know, it, it certainly should not be disbanded. And in particular, with the PBA making overtures about making, being supportive of recruitment, this is a great first step toward recruitment, and it should be fortified and formalized. And, you know, we should find as many avenues as we can to, to, you know, connect Englewood with the emergency services throughout town.
Yeah, but you know what, I like it even better. I don't like the word, the word recruitment is one thing. Building relationships is another thing, right? Relationships last forever.
Correct.
Like these kids to build relationships. So thank you with that, Nancy.
Ms. Glenn or Councilman Cohen, you have anything to add to that?
I would just say that I think the camps are great, and I completely support them, but I think they are only a beginning. And I also would like to see a partnership with the school system to have it more curriculum-based so that more students then can attend the camp are reached, and they're made aware of this career path in, in concrete ways, in ways they can experience firsthand. So I know we had talked about that quite a while ago, and we've not been able to get a meeting with the board, but trying.
Well, I appreciate those comments from the ones that had something to add to that. I also wanted to just clarify the resolution on supporting legislation for Juneteenth to become a holiday in the state of New Jersey. That is exactly what the resolution is going to reflect. It's not kind of like a, let's go get them kind of chant. It's going to be a position that the city of Englewood takes to make Juneteenth a holiday in the state of New Jersey, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, that supports Steve Sweeney's, what he's trying to push right now. The guy who's in charge of the Senate in New Jersey.
Yes, 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 yeah.
That's it, Ms. Hoyle. No further questions? Okay. Nancy, we got any more folks?
We have two more right now. Nat? Nat, do you want to unmute yourself?
Yes, hello. Good evening. I hope you all could hear me. I just want to speak for a minute in favor of the safety enhancements on Broad Avenue and Van Ostrand, Grand Avenue. I think it's great. I think it will make residents of Englewood a lot safer, which we all need. And I want to thank the council and the mayor and engineer and all those involved for taking it up. Thank you.
Next is Robert Lundser.
Thank you. I second the motion, and I want to commend Michael and Michael on their efforts. But if Michael will recall, both Michaels, about five years ago when we had a serious accident on Broad Avenue outside of the synagogue on a Friday night. That was the second time in ten years that happened. Michael hastily put together a meeting at Mr. Ben Arroyo's house, where about twenty of us were there. We came up with ideas. We were pleasantly surprised to hear that the state of Israel offered the city of Englewood, New Jersey, some reflecting lights, which some of you may notice. Most of them are out now in front of two forty Broad Avenue. And basically, I'm just wondering, why is this taking so long if it seems to be important so to every? Why is this being analyzed, analyzed, and analyzed, and nothing's been done in five years? I lost my childhood friend, Dr. Paul Kudowitz, who the council years ago wanted to even name the park after him. It was turned down because we felt he's not the only one, and why does this have to take so long? It's really a sad, sad story that we keep coming up with ideas and nothing is getting done. I've asked Michael and Michael at the, for this meeting or any other meeting, to get a police report of how many accidents are granted Van Ostrand. It's a minimum of one every two months. Been going on for thirty-five years since I'm living here. Please, let's do something, Franz. You always helped me in the past. Please, let's do something, Franz. You always helped me in the past in my personal issues that I had. We had a great relationship, but this needs to move. It cannot wait anymore, and your ideas have to be implemented starting this week. Please. Franz, if you have a reason that nothing's been done, I would like to hear from somebody from the council. Seems like everybody agrees. Michael Wild, is there money to put in this, the lines and some stupid cones at Grand and Van Ostrand so that people don't make a right turn off, off Route four? What is the big deal?
Mr. Cobb, I'm happy to address Mr. Lundser. I know Mr. Lundser since I'm a little kid. And the truth is, there is no acceptable answer when there's any one loss of life that could have been prevented. Government is a process, and I have to tell you that I came back after ten years of service, walking the same corridors you to synagogue, impressed with the genuineness of this current governing body. That when the case was made, they acted and they acted promptly. And if you take a look at your neighbors, we're all sitting through a facakta Zoom machine in the middle of a pandemic, and yet the process is continuing to ensure that there is a good health and safety in passage. Why it happened this long is, is longer than the few minutes that you're allocated, and you can call me tomorrow and I'm happy to talk to you. The fact that it's happening, the fact that it's a substantive, comprehensive report, and it's a $500,000 allocation is very significant, and we have to be grateful for that. There's also other houses of worship, other corridors throughout the city. They're competing on challenges as well. So all I can tell you is I'm appreciative that the governing body is moving this forward. Should they have done it faster, sooner, different, we're here where we are, Robert, and your points are well taken.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, Michael and Michael, could it possibly be done piecemeal where the bureaucracy does not have to be involved? I understand that dealing with the corner of Van Ostrand and Grand involves the county or even the Department of Transportation. But certainly lineage and, and extra arrows, in my opinion, should be local, and that should be done at least right away. All the suggestions that were given this evening.
I, I think Franz had mentioned earlier in the meeting that that was something that, that the striping could be expedited. Is that, I don't wanna speak for you, Franz. I don't know if, is that accurate?
That is what I mentioned. Some of these, some of the recommendations can be done short-term and more immediate than others.
Thank you.
Yancy, anybody else?
I'm not seeing anyone. I'm not seeing anyone with their hand raised.
Okay, we're gonna close the public session, and, and we're gonna go into closed session. Mr. Cool, can you read the closed session?
Absolutely.
Take us in the closed session.
Yeah, be resolved by the Council of the City of Inglewood pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act that the council meet in closed session to discuss the public, following subject matter, subsection seven, dealing with pending or anticipated litigation. And be it further resolved as precisely as can be determined at this time, the discussion conducted in the said so closed session can be disclosed to the public upon taking final action. Be it further resolved that although it is not envisioned, the council will return to open session after this meeting, the council reserves the right to do so upon conclusion of the closed session.
We need, we need a motion.
Go move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're now in closed session.
Give me a minute to finish assigning everybody to their rooms.
Okay.
Got everybody.
No, we have to do a motion to go out of clothes.
Yeah, Charles, you're muted.
Yancy?
Yes, you're muted also.
You, you're muted.
Does that? Sorry. Okay, so Councilman Glenn made the motion to reconvene.
Councilman Hamer seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Is anybody out there in public session?
Nope.
Never ever got to break a tie.
Motion, motion to adjourn?
Is there any way I can ever break a tie, gentlemen?
Well, we got two and two right now.
Motion to adjourn?
We have a, we have a vote of, you know, breaking a tie. We go to two so we can break his own tie.
All right, have a good night, everyone.
Who was the second? I, I moved the motion, motion to adjourn.
I second.
Yancy seconded? Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Good everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Thanks, thanks.
Bye, good night.
Bye bye. Thank you, Yancy.